It is 5:30 and we will begin our study session, very exciting study session tonight about Quincy Farm Visioning. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Black.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I am actually gonna have Chris kick us off with the agenda.
Good, good evening. It is Quincy Farm night. Actually, it's Quincy Farm a couple of days. Just to, just to give council an idea about how tonight's gonna go. You can see what we're gonna hopefully cover tonight. I'll just give you a sneak preview right now. This is probably gonna go back and forth between Emily and I. We will take different turns at different points of, you know, talking through these issues with you. So don't, don't be alarmed if we keep bouncing it back and forth. We're gonna start off the evening with a status update about all the work on the 2025 annual plan that council has already approved. It does sort of inform some of our eventual conversations about next steps. But it's also just a great place for you to hear some of the details about where we're at. In a, in a case, another case or two, maybe where we're not at. Then we will move on to the proposed vision that was in your packet. And this was really at the direction of city council at the January meeting. And we have been busy at work and what we are gonna do is present to you a summary of where we're at up to this point. And go through, walk through with a lot of detail about what's included in the draft part of the plan that's in front of you tonight. We then will move on to, we are hoping, I'll just tell you right now, for the part of the plan, part of the vision that's in front of you. We, we are hoping that you will get to a point where you nod your head, give direction to staff that yes, we are good with this. And even if what has been submitted in your packet gets changed tonight, or you give us direction to change a portion or a section or a sentence, we will still have the opportunity to do all of that, you know, at a future date. We are hoping to build on tonight to allow us to keep taking additional steps towards making significant progress on the long-term plan for, for the farm. We are then going to spend a little bit of time introducing the, the discussion regarding the the MOU update with the land preserve and the operating model discussion. And, and I know that it's been in the packet as well as council members have heard about some of those discussions that have, that have begun. We have, we are not asking council to weigh in and decide anything on that front. But we did wanna give you an update on some of the work that has been done. And also hear from the land preserve as it relates to some of those discussions. And then we are gonna wrap it up with a discussion about next steps. That's not just a cursory next steps slide that you will often see at the end of a PowerPoint. We, we want to have a thorough discussion about how the order of this will play out and some potential timelines. Because some of this is just gonna take, it's gonna take some time and we want expectations to be set. The, the last thing I'll say on this slide before I hand it back over to, well, no, actually, do I have the next one too? Nope, just as okay. Most of the time when staff presents to you, we will often attempt to go through the PowerPoint and then allow you to ask, not allow you, duh, I can't believe I just said that. Then in, you know, ask for questions and discussion and dialogue at that point. Tonight is not one of those nights. We fully expect there to be almost on a slide by slide and in some cases, a point by point on a slide discussion from city council as we go. So what that might mean is we, we likely will not make it through the entire PowerPoint before we need to break to go into the regular meeting. So we may stop short of 5:30 if there's a natural break in our, in our presentation tonight. But, but this is a night where we encourage dialogue as we go.
And if I could just add to that briefly and say, you know, I, what really has needed to occur, in my opinion, with regard to Quincy Farm for quite some time is a real discussion from amongst the, the people tasked with making the ultimate decision, right? And so please, this isn't a, here's the presentation, yes or no, that, that we really, I want everyone to really engage and let's discuss it.
As like an example, I will build on that. I, I think staff would like to hear thoughts, not just, yeah, that sounds good. We certainly, I think, could use more insight into council's overall thinking on a lot of these questions. So a discussion in addition to direction would be much appreciated. The research for the MOU and the operating model discussion, I, I don't think that we are asking for you to start making decisions and to start, you know, maybe making, you know, going back and forth of what if we did this and what if we did this. But to the extent that you did wanna throw out some, some reactions, some thoughts, again, that will be beneficial for us. So I would agree. So with that said, I will turn it back over to Emily.
Yes, so kicking things off, starting out with the status update about where we are in the 2025 annual plan, project by project. So as you all know, we are just wrapping up construction for the big barn, which is very exciting. And we will be hosting the grand reopening with Cherry Hills Land Preserve on June 22nd. So all of that information is on their website and we're in great shape there. For the landscape plan, that is something that we have been working on. Park staff has put together really beautiful renderings for that landscape plan. That's specific to the east side of the farm. It's not both sides. It's just that east side. So we're now in the process of writing that plan out and making it into a plan now that we have all the visual concepts together. So that's underway. The pond, we are getting ready to put that project out to bid at the same time we are going through the, it's not quite a permitting process, but a permission process with Arapahoe County, Denver Water, and the High Line Canal Conservancy, since they now hold the conservation easement on the length of the canal. So that's moving along. Farmhouse feasibility study, we're also getting ready to put that out to bid. That's drafted. And that is for this east side farmhouse that's pictured on your screen there, to be the support building for the barn. So that's where our accessible restrooms would be, updated kitchen facility, that type of thing. And then visioning, which we'll be talking about more tonight. Remaining to be done, we have the footbridge, which we're hoping to get to this fall. Requires the same, we're finding slightly intensive permitting process from, through the county. Getting some signage together for the site, talking about the MOU, which again, will update you this evening. And then the last project that we had in the 2025 annual plan was costing for the Hopkins House. And that was getting updated costs together for getting an accessible entrance into that house and an accessible restroom. What we're finding as we have held a couple of events over there, and the land preserve really has held events over there, is that we're thinking at this time that it makes the most sense. We could go ahead and get those costs this year, but we won't actually be going under construction for that house next year. We're not anticipating that. So we think that it makes more sense to hold off on that cost estimating and focus our efforts with the capacity that we have at this point on really working on that east side and figuring out the farmhouse, figuring out possible parking in next year's annual plan, and really making that side of the farm sort of a, a complete usable, accessible space that makes sense for events. And then turning, you know, pivoting to that west side and starting on that.
If I could just add on to that, and, and I think Emily did a great job of laying out a lot of the lessons learned and the practical side as we've begun to use the site on why that makes sense. I would offer to you as a reform city planner, it also may make sense from what we have on next steps on getting a lot of the potential eventual goals and objectives done because that may inform what we do on the scope and the type of a Hopkins House, you know, costing exercise may change depending on how we wanna use the building.
Yes.
So Emily, what is the, can you just lay out the timing of the, roughly, not exact, but when do you expect to have the landscape plan and the feasibility study and so on? That'd be helpful.
Oh goodness. That's a tall order off the top of my head. Let me do my best. Landscape plan, we don't have a hard and fast timeline for that. I mean, my hope is really to have it done by this fall because it's really going to inform what we do next year. So there's not a huge rush since that's something that we're doing internally. But it will inform what goes into the annual plan in terms of costs for buying plants and maybe putting in a path and, and that type of thing. So the hope would be to complete that one this fall. Pond, we are aiming to start construction, to have a contractor lined up this summer and then to start construction, hopefully on September 1st. That's our target date because we can't go any earlier. That pond is sensitive wildlife habitat, so we wanna be outside of songbird and raptor nesting season. So that typically would be considered over August 31st. So the hope is to get that project started that date. I apologize, I don't remember off the top of my head what our timeline is for completing that project. I believe it's like eight weeks of dredging at most and earthwork. And then we would basically pause because then there's planting that needs to be done. So we anticipate that project going a little bit into next spring because we'll need to plant when it's appropriate to do that. Farmhouse feasibility study, we'll have it out to bid soon, but I, I don't know that we've worked out a timeline on that. And then visioning is underway now.
So I think that, just to, you know, provide feedback, I think that spending time and money to get cost estimates, that unless we're ready to move forward, those cost estimates would be completely outdated at, you know, very quickly. So that doesn't, if we're not thinking that's gonna be high on the priority list for 2026, then I don't, don't think we should do that.
But I'm not sure that the farmhouse wouldn't be high on my priority list for 2025 even.
The farm, the Hopkins house, though, is the other, okay, yeah, the Hopkins house.
I mean, because if the barn is done, you know, the whole, right? I mean, we want the complimentary kitchen and bathrooms and all that kinda stuff. So I would say, I would encourage the sooner the better. Maybe we're talking about two different.
Yeah, wait, I'm sorry. To, to clarify for my understanding, are, are we talking about the farmhouse, which is the one that's pictured on your screen right now, or the Hopkins house? The Hopkins house is on the west side. That's the one that we're considering waiting on.
I'm talking about the farmhouse.
Yes, we are moving forward with that feasibility study this year, anticipating hopefully that we could be under construction next year.
So the, just to think about lining it up with the budget year, I know I say that a lot, but thinking about maybe sooner than the end of the year, if we were going to line that up with our
We will
Enough numbers to do the budget.
Okay. Sounds good.
More specifically, for the 2026 annual plan draft that we are targeting to have to council in August.
Okay, any other questions on current projects? If not, we can jump right into visioning here. Okay, so just a bit of a background reminder. This came about while council was considering the 2025 annual plan. You all had requested that this visioning exercise be added in along with the evaluating the memorandum of understanding. So per the MOU between the city and the land preserve, we've been developing these annual plans and approving these annual plans for Quincy Farm every year. And the discussion at council, considering the 2025 annual plan, was that it would be beneficial to have a broader vision, to compare those annual plans back to every year, really to ensure continuity of purpose and to really make sure that we were keeping on track with a broader vision for the property. So we had added this visioning section to that plan that appears on your screen. And we have been working for the last few months to complete that task. So what this visioning exercise has entailed has been a review of prior work that's been completed for the farm. So the Quincy Farm Visioning Committee report, work that the Quincy Farm Committee did following the visioning committee, CHLP's strategic roadmap, just past planning that's been done for the farm, since we did have a lot to draw on. We also conducted interviews with each individual counselor to find out more about what your personal visions were for the farm, what you were anticipating happening there. And we also did research into similar local properties, so bluff-like And we also did research into similar local properties, so Bluff Lake Nature Center, Four Mile House, and Seventeen Mile House were the primary few that we looked at. And you have attached in your packet a chart of the different ways that those properties are used and programming that happens there.
Oh, I'm going to take it back over. Flip, flop, flip, flop. So that background research was critical, because it really did help start to shape what this vision could look like. And I will tell you, I mean, Emily, I think it's clear that a lot of the previous work that has gone on surrounding Quincy Farm still has an impact, but the work that the visioning committee specifically did probably had the most impactful, has the biggest fingerprints all over what you've seen in front of you of all of that background work that we did. That one seemed to sort of, sort of bite through all the other information that was to really stand out. And so really what we've ended up with is, under a vision, a vision can mean seven different things to seven different people. I don't know how I came up with seven people, but let's just use that as an example. So what we've really tried to do is dial this in so that it provides enough of a big-picture vision, as you talked about, but it also gets just specific enough that we can then check every annual plan against it, and it provides meaningful direction as it relates to potentially budgets or long-range capital projects. And so what we've come up with this, we think it walks a fine balance on that front. So there's a section on the background and history, talking about the conservation easement, a lot of the history of the site, the actual donation. Then we start with the classic vision statement, you know, the one that is used often by corporations, by governments. We then add some key principles. These principles really are applying to the property as a whole. They are not just, you know, on one side or the other. So we start to get a little bit more specific. We start at the highest of high level with the mission statement, the vision statement, I mean, and then we start to get more and more specific as we go. After the key principles, we have some narratives that start talking about specific activities on the east side and the west side. It really starts to paint a picture about the differences of how those two sides, the east side and west side of the High Line Canal, really are the vision and how they might be used. But by including some of those activities, we're then starting to inform future plans and the goals and objectives about individual structures, right? Based on what the tenor and the vibe of each one of those sides are. The last part of this vision will be goals and objectives, but we didn't include that in your packet tonight. We really wanted to check in with council at this stage. We think that there's enough meat for council to chew on, that we did not want to presuppose or get too far ahead of you on where this was going. And we thought this would be a good point to check in, see how you think, is this on the right path? If it's not, where do we need to go instead? That will allow us to bring back to you goals and objectives that will more likely be in line with what you're hoping to see. Now, we are not wanting this to be a master plan, a classic, old-school master plan where every square inch of the property is basically accounted for. We have multiple phases, timelines for construction, individual building construction costs. It is not that detailed. Even with the goals and objectives, it will not be that detailed. We are imagining, though, where it might consider, for example, some broad categories of goals and objectives, like facilities on the east side, or facilities on the west side, or landscaping, or specific projects that we need to find out more information on. I'm, this is the top of my head, this is not, don't take this to the bank, maybe it's anywhere from four to seven goals. So again, this is not a master plan with chapters, and each chapter having its own set of goals. This is more of a intermediate step. So that's what we have in mind at this point. We would bring those back to you based on how tonight goes and the direction you provide us tonight with those more specific goals and objectives. Does that make sense for council? Does that sound like, I will tell you, we have spent a lot of time trying to hit the mark on enough specificity that is accomplishing what you told us you wanted to accomplish, but isn't so specific that we are planting ourselves into a corner, if that makes sense. So we would love to hear any thoughts you might have.
My initial thought is that that makes a lot of sense. Where this project or process has gotten derailed several times over the past is that we go too far and get too down into the details before we get broad consensus on kind of the big picture. And so I appreciate that we're taking a slightly different approach to see if we can all come to the same place up here and then let those things fall from that. You know, that being said, I do, I do think those goals and objectives are important, and I wouldn't want this to be perceived as, you know, taking any, taking our foot off the gas pedal, so to speak, but being thoughtful about it and methodical about it, I think is important.
Yeah, I think it's the right approach. My question is, what is the thinking around public involvement or getting some reaction from the community?
We have, we have discussed that, and I think it's a real possibility. I think council will ultimately help provide that direction.
What are your thoughts on that, Doug?
Well, let me just say one more thing, real quick. I think some directions, some goals and objectives that council may or may not want to see would invite more public input than others. Some, some goals and objectives could be viewed as almost like a universally accepted, that sounds great, mom and apple pie. Other ones may be considered more controversial, and that may really just beg for public input. So it's, it's possible to be in there. I don't think we're far enough, and I'm looking at the technical team, I don't think we're far enough along to say to you, we for sure are going to have three open houses, and they're these dates, because we just, I don't think we're there yet. We wanted to make sure we're on the right path first.
I've just heard enough, you know, interest in it as the jewel of our village and so on, that I would encourage the rest of us, at some point, I don't think, I think we go through this process, this could be six, eight months from now, but I think at some point, after we flesh this out more, it would be wise to have at least one public meeting or maybe more than that, I don't know.
What do you, what do you mean? What process would be six to eight months from now?
This process of the, of the vision and the goals and the objectives. I mean, maybe it's faster than that.
Yeah, well, and he used that expression, keeping your foot on the gas. I think the staff team would sit back and say, because of the liaison, there's no worry about keeping the foot on the gas. Now, council, now council may want to put the brakes on it, which is perfectly fine, but, and both Katie and Chris were nice, we're hoping that we're putting a stake in the ground. What that really means is, is we ain't coming back and addressing this anymore. If we're successful tonight, we're not coming back and addressing the vision statement, key principles, and the narrative. We're moving on then to the goals and objectives, which is actually my view where there's really going to be a lot of discussion and debate.
Right, and after we get through that process, I think is.
But the other thing, though, which is, and you may have noticed, I'm sure you did notice it in CHLP's memorandum, one of the things that they point out, I really believe in this, I mean, it's hard to sit back and ever argue against getting public input, right? But that is my view, one of the, one of the roles that CHLP has provided, and that, and it's even in their, their recitation of what they do, I tend to agree with that. Everybody else needs to weigh in on that. And I sit back and say, for instance, I'd sit back and say, if we had an open house on Quincy Farms, if we had 50 people here, we'd be feeling really, really good about it. And that won't compare to the hundreds of people that land preserve and that Ellen Thompson has gathered input from. I view that as public input. Now, that's just me, everybody else needs to weigh in and say, hey, well, we don't, or we do. But I think, I think it's, that's a, that's an important thing, that we've gotten a lot of public input.
Yeah, so first of all, I agree with everyone, because I think it's the right approach, so appreciate it and all the hard work that's gone into this by, by everybody. I do think we have a little bit of a Venn diagram thing going on here, that it's important to hear from the land preserve what their view of their role is, which I know we're putting off to another night, to inform the strategy and some of what you've been talking about. And as an example, you know, I might agree with you, Earl, if it has to do with programming, but I'm not sure I do agree with you, if it has to do with the strategic direction for capital and what structures are going to stay, although obviously program has to inform that, because if the programming plan is, you know, this wide versus this, you may need different structures or the like. So I, I think you have to have order to it, you've done it well, but it's not clean silos here. There has to be a little bit of back and forth in, in the steps that you've outlined, I think. Does that make sense?
And I think, the way I hear what you were talking about and kind of reconcile it with what Earl has said and where I've been, you know, this process, given all these documents, has been more than a decade. There have been multiple, multiple public input meetings and all over the place. Times have changed, people are new, Quincy Farm has much higher awareness now than it did when some of these things happened. But I, I think back to my sort of professional experience and the cautionary tales of, you know, going through master planning or long-term planning was kind of all the rage, right? Everybody needed a long-term plan. And they would, we would hire consultants and we'd do the long-term plan, and then it would just go on somebody's shelf and we'd never look at it again. And I am absolutely delighted that our team has gone back and looked at the visioning committee report. As I read that again, you know, I was on that committee, so was Laura, it resonated so much with me now, 10 years later, it still is spot-on, in my opinion. And so I think it's really important that we rely on the public input that we did get and not keep setting aside public input for the flavor of today, right? Or the 20 people who show up to the meeting today have a stronger voice somehow than the 20 people who showed up to the meeting, albeit a few years ago. That being said, I'm not opposed to getting more public input. I do think we have had substantial public input, but where I would agree with you, Dave, is that when we get to these specific goals and objectives, as Chris said, some of them might be really controversial. And so I can see soliciting public input about those potentially new ideas, but while still kind of honoring Earl's point that these overall high-level vision and principles are a stake in the ground, and we're not going to keep going back and revisiting those every time a new group of people shows up and, you know, I mean, it's.
Otherwise, by definition, it's not a vision.
Right.
And, and just some exemplars, I think the kinds of things that pop out, I think you all agree, parking, paid events, those kinds of things might require a little bit of input.
And I was specifically thinking about what we're doing with the main house.
Yes, that's.
And so I think at that point, when we, when we flesh that all out, it probably is in our best interest to solicit public input on that.
I could agree with that.
So I would just offer to council, we haven't, the goal and objective may be, the goal, a goal may be, and I know for some council people, this will feel very unsatisfying. I recognize this right out of the gate. But the goal may be to evaluate key structures to determine their long-term role, meaning do we take them down, do we keep them, et cetera?
A feasibility study.
Very well, it could be a feasibility study, meaning that the goals and objectives may not be where we decide to take that structure down, right? Maybe we do. I, I, I'm not prepared to tell you it will or won't include that direction. I would just offer to you that, that's why I said, depending upon what the goals and objectives are, may require different types of public input. You know, if it's, if it's not including a topic like that, which we know will generate a high amount of.
Engagement.
Feedback. You know, there's other ways that we can get public input that don't necessarily involve, you know, a town hall meeting, right? And whereas if we were going to ask and answer that question through this goals and objectives step, we probably would want to do something more focused. So that's why my answer before was, depends, because I think it's going to depend on how specific we want to get with goals and objectives. With all that said, at some point tonight, and I would offer that now, this slide is not where you were asking for it, if you do have thoughts and you say, hey, when you get to goals and objectives, make sure that it does this, or accomplishes that, or says, you know, answers this question. If there is one that you want to see, let us know, because again, that will help us hit the mark when we eventually get to that point. I would prefer that you wait to hear what we are including in it first, before you give us that feedback tonight.
Well, I guess what I would say is that I, in terms of public meetings and getting additional public input on the vision statement and the key principles and the narrative, what is being presented sort of now, I don't feel that it's necessary, you know, once this council either says yes or no, or yes with changes, I don't think it's necessary then to go back to the community at this stage and say again, well, what do you think about this? Right? I, I think we're beyond that. We've done that multiple, multiple times. But as we start to flesh out details that have not been previously addressed, I do think that it will be appropriate, and it may not even be the goals and objectives, it may be as we even drill down further.
Further from that.
And I think we'll all know when those moments arise, what, I think we all know what the hot button issues are.
Yeah.
That, you know, and when one of them comes up, we can ask what people think.
I think staff would agree with what the mayor just said. If we needed to go get public input and do multiple town hall meetings or whatever about steps one, or parts one through four, we wouldn't even be able to start on goals and objectives until we made it through that whole process. And I think timing, it's, you're going to see later, you may have already seen in the packet, right, the timeline for this, we are not proposing wrapping this up in August, right? This is going to stretch out. And if we were to do public input on just sections one through four, it would, we didn't build that in, so it would push out even further.
So when are you expecting to have the goals and objectives back to us?
That is the thorough discussion I hope to have with council at the end, if that's okay.
If I can, I'd like to, you know, as part of the visioning, I want to go backwards just a half a step before we jump into forward. And backwards is to pay recognition again to the 2014 original visioning statement and, and study. And I would, almost the same way when we talked about doing a traffic study, about doing it every decade, we're not really starting from ground zero here, as we recognize the work that was done before. We're almost doing a, an update, and so I don't want to, if for nothing else than PR labeling, I don't want to call this a new visioning study, because it makes us, according to the record, that's what they started doing and did 10 years ago or 12 years ago. And people would say, well, what have you been doing for 12 years? And I'd rather have this be framed as an update to the visioning or a refinement thereto, but that's, that's phrasing. The other piece that I wanted to jump in a little bit is, while many of the things that are in that 2014 document continue to exist as probably things that we all want to continue with, there are some things that may or may not continue. Just by an example, it talks about some of the use options that are there that we may not want to look at. Those use options continue to have implications, yes, for the big house, but for other places The other thing that, just as a side, I noticed in the 2014 statement, it did talk about a small nature path on the west side of the property. Sorry.
Oh yeah, there's, there's a lot.
Back to the topic at hand, and that is that I think some of those things may not necessarily, in terms of the activities, fit within the idea of what we come up for the vision, and I'm keeping it way up at 30,000 feet right now. the vision. And I'm keeping it way up at 30,000 feet right now. But for me, some of the things that will impact my decision on visioning, if we can have a little bit of discussion on what is the overall idea of whether or not this property is to be deemed a revenue stream or not, because that influences some of my visioning of what happens on the property. And I don't need it to, you know, I kind of put it in three categories, no revenue, some revenue, or a lot of revenue. And, you know, I think that kind of will gauge a lot of what I think I look at about how the property gets used.
I think to maybe take what you're saying up to a little bit higher level, the one thing that struck me was there's nothing in this that talks about how it all gets paid for. And, and we know this is a, not an inexpensive gift that we received. It's a valuable gift and it's a treasure, but it is also something that can eat up a lot of money and has eaten up a lot of money. And so not only what's revenue stream, some none, a lot, I think more just how do we, how do we pay for this? I, I guess my question is where is that in this format?
Well, and I think
Or where do you anticipate it being?
And, and to add to that, I think the idea here that goes to that question, we, when a number of us ran two years ago, we talked about whether or not Quincy Farm would or would not bankrupt the city or had money for it, is I think there might have to be involvement with staff about, you know, what is the level of the park fund? Where is it going? Do we have the money to implement this? And then we're going to have to, again, decide the wise stewards of whether or not it's worth spending a ton of money, some money or no money, and how that fits into the some medium or a lot of revenue source. But I, again, it's difficult and the general part that I come to is, is when people say we don't have the money to do this, I don't know if that's true. I don't believe that's true. But I think the general concept is we want to be wise stewards of taxpayer money, of course, but we don't want to ever be in a situation where we say, we can't do that because we don't have money, because my sense is we do if we want to.
Well, I mean, it's not unlimited. We do, we have money. We're not bankrupt, right? And so I think you're right.
No, but I mean, the parks fund
Yeah, the question is, I mean, but we can't, there is a limit to how much we can invest in this. And so it's not, I agree with you, it's not so much a question of, do we have the money, as much as it is a question of, is this a responsible use of taxpayer dollars? Is it providing significant value to the community that we feel the city of Cherry Hills Village, that it's within our sort of scope of services to provide that? And, you know, does it make sense?
I was going to say something very similar, but, but I'm having a little chicken and egg problem with what you said, Rob, because if one of the principles is, if you look at the chart that shows the benchmarking, do we want those kind of numbers of visitors? And if, if we do, then there may be some revenue that comes with it. But if we don't, you know, revenue may not be the, the big driver, right? So I think you have to figure out some of the principles. And I, again, I'm a little, that chicken and egg thing. I don't know which comes first, but both have to be.
And, and if I could, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Earl.
Oh, couple of things. One, one is, and I agree, Rob, going back to what you said before, that's why I think the team, you know, really focused on that original visioning committee. And when I reread it again, I thought, you know, actually, we've been doing this. I mean, it's to a large degree. But one thing, though, that was never done, and I think this is a true statement, no city council ever adopted that plan and adopted that vision as the vision for Quincy Farms. That's what we need to do here. We need to put that stake in the ground and say that's the deal. Okay? So that, that's important. That's number one. Number two is I understand exactly what you're saying, but you can, about needing the money and what have you and trying to look at that. But you can also come at it the other way, and you can, okay? You can sit back and go, I have a vision. I want to put an amusement park there. Oh, I am going to need to look at the money then at that point in time. Somebody could sit back and go, I don't care how much money we have. I want it to be a natural, open area with nothing on it. Don't need, don't need any money. Don't need any money for that. So you can start from a perspective and go, what is, what, what do we want to see happen at Quincy Farms?
Yeah.
And then dig down and then say at that point, okay, can we do that?
Or to what scale?
Or
Yeah, but should we do it? Can we do it? And to what scale?
Right, right, exactly. And, and so that's, that's kind of, and I think to a large degree, that's what was going on here, which is, but it might not be. I mean,
No, no, I
I think, I think that what's laid out and what we were looking at is in large measure what a lot of people have said they want to see. But as I said, in, I think maybe the last meeting, I go, but if a council, or if the council goes way over here, I said this, this, all of this is going to get thrown out. It's going to have to be rewritten. It doesn't go so far out over here. It's like, this is where it is at that point in time. And the question is, is does this council think, yeah, I can get all of the things I want to see when we get down into those goals and objectives and I can, I can get that in there? Or is it, no, this really doesn't do it, because I know I'm going to want to see it go further out on that continuum, in which case then this, this isn't going to do it.
I, I would offer, and I'm glad I let you speak first before me, because you put some of this much better than I could have.
That would be unusual.
Counselor McGuire, I, I would offer to you that we have to answer the questions that you're asking. We have to ask and answer those questions before we get past a certain spot. It's too critical. It informs too much. We could come up with, there is a chicken and egg element to this, right? If we came up with a vision that there's just, it's impossible to fund with fundraising and grants and the city parks fund and everything else, well, that's, that's not helping anything either, right? So it has to be based in some sort of reality. But how do we get out of that cycle, that, that where you're constantly chasing your tail? What I'm proposing to you is, and again, going back to the agenda that kicked this whole thing off, which is what's on your slide now, I think there's an opportunity to go through what amounts to steps one through four, sections one through four, get council to buy off on those. We then need to have, we need, we as staff need to do additional research about what, the direction you've given us on the MOU, which has evolved since we talked about it last, to begin talking about an operating model and, you know, potential fundraising or not fundraising, but, you know, fees or any number of other things that might go along with that. That conversation sort of has grown to encompass multiple parts. So my recommendation to you is that we go through sections one through four, pause, have, now that we've got a vision, and it's very high level still, but it's a vision without getting into the specifics of keep this building, take that building down.
Right.
Right? We then have a conversation about an operating model and any kind of funding that, or fundraising or fees or anything else that might go along with that. We also have an opportunity to talk about our partnership with the land preserve that goes with that. I, I, that's my recommendation of what the next step would be. Then, that, in my opinion, that, the outcomes of those conversations are, were fully equipped then. We no longer have a chicken or the egg. We have the chicken and the egg. We can begin writing the goals and objectives that match both the vision and our economic realities.
I agree with that. I guess my comment is, is we as a council have spent a lot of time in the last year and a half in particular, talking about our financial relationship and with the, the land preserve and, you know, what's the share of the barn? And, and it became too uncomfortable because it was too much of an emphasis that the partnership was based on money and the use of, and granted, that's one of the goals and objectives items that, you know, and implementation things that we'll discuss later. I mentioned the resources because I want to get back above to that super high level that doesn't look at economics as a limiting factor or not, because as I mentioned, I think that, I believe the money is there if you wanted to spend it. I have absolutely no desire to spend it if it's a bad thing to spend. I just want us to make sure that we understand when we are visioning, that there's been a lot of talk about, well, we need this level of input from the community. Really, I'm not sure that we do. It's a, it's a good thing for, for a lot of reasons, but to do what we want to do with this piece of property, I don't know if it's dependent on financial input from other things right off the bat. So I want to, I, I mention it because I want us to get back at that really high level that everybody's talking about, what do we all really want to see at that property? Then we'll figure out what's the wise use of money to get there.
I think that's fair.
This is, by the way, again, we don't normally do it this way where we have such thorough discussions as we go. This is exactly what staff was hoping for, so thank you for that. I do think, I was going to turn it back over to Emily to go through the proposed vision. I think we have a question. Yeah. We're really jumping into the meat of the document part at this point. Would it make, I would hate to just get like halfway through the vision statement and then us having to take a break, do roll call, do the, would it make sense to just take a break here and then sort of jump in right at the proposed vision statement after the regular meeting starts?
It's the pleasure.
Yeah, let's use the 15 minutes that we
Perfect, okay.
Okay. So based on all of that background research that we did and the discussions with all of you, this is the proposed vision statement that we've come up with for you tonight. So Quincy Farm will serve as a cornerstone of Cherry Hills Village's educational and recreational activities, focusing on open space and the natural and historical values embodied in the conservation easement. Visitors to the farm will experience this unique place through nature walks, guided learning, and community gatherings. Care and maintenance of the farm will be characterized by responsible stewardship, sustainable management, and habitat conservation. So if there are comments right off the bat, I'm
I heard, I heard a comment brewing over there.
I, I think this is really good. I like that you have the Karen maintenance piece at the end with the stewardship and sustainable management, habitat conservation. One thing that has always struck me, and I've mentioned this before, is I don't feel like as a village we have a cultural centerpiece. And as much as I love this city hall, it's not it, right? I hope that doesn't offend anybody. I really do think it's a fabulous, but it's, it's not someplace where people come to gather. And, and I think Quincy Farm really can be that for the city. And so I would love to add, serve as cornerstone of Cherry Hills Village's maybe cultural, educational, and recreational activities. But I'd love to have the concept of it's a cultural center in this statement somewhere.
And what, what is, does cultural mean in that? Because cultural, when I, when I think cultural, I mainly think like art and performing art. Is that?
Nope.
So that's why, yeah.
To me, it means a place where people come together and engage.
Okay.
Now, I don't have a problem with it also meaning art. And certainly, I think there's anticipation that art will have a, a place at the farm, right?
Yeah, I
We've already got those things.
The cornerstone word, though, when, I do think that art will have a place there for sure.
To me, it means more than that.
I'm just not sure that I see Quincy Farm as the center for art in Cherry Hills Village.
Yeah, and that's not what I'm meaning it to mean. So to me, it means more of a culture in the sense of it's a, a village center, a, a place for the village to come together and engage.
Okay. Counselor Fish?
I had a similar comment to yours, Mrs. McGuire. I, I think the wording in the 2014 vision statement was that it would be, serve as the hub for the City of Cherry Hills Village's open space, I think. I don't, I don't know if that's an exact quote. And by the way, before I forget, I'm looking right at you. The, the wording throughout, the, the way this was written and the way this was organized was exceptional. So, thank you. Like, just outstanding. It's one of the best reports, just the way that it flowed and your vocabulary and your writing was, was really good.
Thank you.
Which, so I, I picked that up as one thing in the 2014 visioning statement that maybe hasn't been continued, which is exactly what you just said, Counselor McGuire, right? And I, it's been a while since I looked at the homepage or the page on the city website for Quincy Farm, but I recall it feeling very different from all of the rest of the pages. And there are reasons for that, right? With the land preserve and the, all the different, I get it, right? But it is, it has a lot of things that you can't do. There is no parking. You can't have tra, we don't have trash cans. I don't remember all the things.
Oh, yeah.
And so like the very front of it, I think, instead of being a welcoming hub, in fact, you don't even see that there are all these phenomenal programs until you get through all those things. Somebody might want to look it up, but maybe some, if we do agree that it should be a hub or a cultural center or whatever wording we decide on, that might be a place to start. Yeah, Counselor Rob.
So this is exceptional, Emily. It really is. I've seen a lot of these. My only, well, my comment is that I think this should be accessible to the whole community and that most of the community does not know what's in the conservation easement. And that maybe we should either explain what those values are or remove that piece of it.
Elaborate instead of saying embodied in the conservation easement.
The natural and historical values of this, this, this as embodied in the conservation easement, or just say the natural
For people who don't
This, this, this. Just it leaves, it leads to, what are those? The way it's written right now. We've, we've been steeped in it, so we kind of, that makes sense. But if you're accessing this without a knowledge of the conservation easement, it's a little hard to understand what that is. That was my comment.
The only thing I'd say, though, is the conservation easement is a rather confusing document.
Yeah.
And, which I think is, has led to a lot of the controversy around the farm itself. So I think we'd have to be careful there. But, but what might, I think, be an interesting thing, and maybe it's down in the goals and, or down in the goals that are coming up, is, is to have something at the farm that kind of does walk through. What is the conservation easement? What's the purpose of it? Why is it important? I think, I don't know that I've ever seen that discussed anywhere in the different plans, but I think that would be a, that'd be a very valuable thing to have at the farm. So maybe it's not actually in the vision statement, but it's, it's something that we do at the farm.
So my thoughts real quick. I know, Karen, you mentioned the hub. I don't actually think that's from the 2014 visioning document. It's from something else, though. And I was just looking at it as I was writing my article for the Crier. So it is, and I really liked that wording too. It was a hub, and it, and it was specifically talking about a hub of like the, the parks and open space system. And
Emily probably knows exactly what
Well, I, I think, I think our proposed vision statement, the previous version may have even had hub in it, and we changed it, I think. But
Here, this is on
Oh, okay.
Page eight. Quincy Farm can further contribute, this is eight of the original visioning
Yep.
Committee plan. Can further contribute to the goals
Yes.
By serving as a hub
Okay.
For the city's entire parking trail system.
So yeah, it is in there. Okay. Maybe this is where
Ideally positioned to be a hub for programs and activities that extend, imagine, yeah, and then it goes into more detail on it.
So the word that, so I like that hub concept. I'm not exactly sure how that might fit in here somewhere. The other concept that I really liked, or the word that I really liked from the original visioning document is the word heritage. The, on the very beginning, it's page five of the Quincy Farm Visioning Committee Report, it had a mission statement that's called out in a little colored box. And it says, "The mission of Quincy Farm is to preserve Colorado's heritage with responsible stewardship," et cetera, et cetera. So So when we talk about, oh, where, I just really like the concept that, that Quincy Farm is a legacy of what Cherry Hills Village used to be. And it's the heritage of Cherry Hills Village. Before it was developed, it was, it's small rural farming, agricultural. I like that concept of heritage and that word, and that that's really what we're trying to preserve, is a concept of the, that way of life, the, where Cherry Hills Village came from.
Before the country club.
Before the, before the country club. Multiple country clubs. Before my house, before your house, before anybody here's houses. So I, those are, I, I, and I do, I love the way this is written, and so I don't even actually really want to wordsmith it. I just throw out there that those are two concepts that really resonated with me that were in previous documents that, so.
I can go real quick. I, I don't know if it belongs in here or not, or maybe not at all, but what, I, I guess part of a vision, it seems to me, would be who this applies to. And is it, is it Cherry Hills Village modifying the whole thing? We talk about visitors, not residents. So it, you know, should there be an element here that talks about, do we want this to be a, you know, a statewide asset, a regional asset, a Cherry Hills only asset? It, it, or does that belong somewhere else or not at all? So I'll just leave that thought.
That, that is something that's captured in the next section, which is the key principles a little bit better. If I can just, really quick, some quick information for everybody. We had a rather lengthy discussion about the hub piece. And the way that it's worded is, it's a hub for programs and activities that can extend to all of the city's parks and trails. That's the, the language that's in the 2014 visioning statement. We also liked the word hub, but we thought that that description just wasn't quite right because just logistically, that can't really happen the way that the farm is set up and the way that we hold other events. So we had a discussion about that and opted to back away from it because we didn't think it was a realistic reflection of what can happen on the farm. Katie, to your point about heritage, I think that there's a, there's a key principle that we could add.
Agreed.
That to, really cleanly without having to wordsmith.
I was going to say the exact same thing, is I think that that is worth noting, but I think that's a key principle as we move forward with future construction or whatever it might be, we, the key principle is that we keep an eye on making sure that the site itself maintains its ability to reflect Cherry Hills Village's agricultural heritage. Something along those lines. I absolutely think that the key principles is a great spot for that. The hub one is a little trickier, I think.
Well, the other thing, too, that I'd point out, and again, I mean, like you say, we're not geared necessarily to wordsmith, but it was wordsmithed. I mean, literally a cornerstone versus the cornerstone. That was, that was intentional to go that way as opposed to driving it towards, which then says that the farm becomes the hub. We're saying, no, we've got a hell of a village here, and we've got other great parks. This is a jewel, but it's like we didn't want to take away from, from that other. And to your point, Dave, which I think is a good one, but the point is, is it's a cornerstone of Cherry Hills Village's. I mean, it says it right there. That's what, and then as Emily said later on, is going to get into it, but it's, no, it's not of the state of Colorado's. It's of Cherry Hills Village's. So this is kind of just the initial vision statement that everything's going to fit into.
All right, well, let's, let's pause that there for a moment. It is 6:30.
No, no, I, I can wait. I mean, that's no problem at all. I just want.
We'll take this up. I think we expressed some things and got some closure on that, and we can still continue to discuss it. All right, so it is 6:30 PM, and I will call the city council meeting to order. Will the person acting as the clerk please call the roll call?
Counselor Heller.
Here.
Counselor Eber.
Here.
Mayor Protem Holen.
Here.
Counselor McGuire.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. So as a reminder, it'll be, the one person will be called in the order that you signed up. You have a time limit of five minutes, and we just ask that the audience be respectful and do not interfere with the orderly function of the meetings.
Thank you.
And I turn, I'd state your name and address for the record. So the person is Daniel, is it Seacrest?
Seacrest, yes. Thank you. My address is 6112 Blue Ridge Drive in Highlands Ranch, and then I'm interested in leasing 1400 East Hampton Avenue in that C2 district. The reason I'm here is Colorado has a, I'm interested in starting a coin shop that sells bullion precious metals and coins. Colorado has a sales tax exemption for those items, but cities can elect to either have the exemption or not. So in order to actually be able to be profitable, coin shop margins are usually one and a half to two percent, and sales tax is about three and a half percent, is three and a half percent. So to be able to open a business, there would need to be a sales tax exemption. So that's my, kind of my purpose in presenting here. But I have a little bit of a, a letter that I'd love to give you afterward that details some of the considerations and stuff as you look at that. Greenwood Village, Centennial, Aurora, Parker, Castle Rock do have the exemption. So there's, there's a mix of towns around the area that do have it and some that don't. And it kind of affects where coin shops go. And so my hope is that I could put it one on Hampton Avenue, and it would be a great place that people can stay local rather than buying online. On the online dealers don't have to pay the tax, they don't have to collect the tax. And so I'm just trying to get a, a level playing field with the, the online bullion dealers and start a local business. So that's about it.
Thank you. So I forgot to mention in that, that public testimony is just public testimony, so we listen to what you say, but we don't interact or have dialogue. And for your information, what would happen next is that if the council feels that is something the council would like to take up, we would at some point direct the staff to do that.
Okay.
So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I know, I believe the city manager did forward your letter to us a week or two, maybe even ago. So we have seen it, and thank you so much for reaching out.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports from members of city boards and commissions, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I, oh, okay. I move approval of the consent agenda items 6A and 6B, assuming no one wants to remove anything.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on, there's no items removed, there's no unfinished business. Moving on to new business, we, we will discuss Quincy Farm visioning. It feels like ages since we've had this conversation. Okay. Yes, you may. Counselor Eber.
I look at statements like this and try and come at it from the approach of, what can somebody who wants to do something that we probably don't want done, use our own language as a way to kind of drive home something that.
Whatever would make you approach it that way, Rob?
I don't know. Maybe it's my education a little bit, but maybe it's real life experience. At any rate, where I'm going on this is I look at the word recreational in the second sentence, and I have some frustration with it and think it, the idea there, somebody mentioned earlier about the concept of engagement. And I think engagement is broader and could include recreational possibly, without formally saying recreational, because I'm very nervous about the concept of the West Side having a recreational component that somebody turns around and says, "You told me that all of Quincy Farm in your visioning statement could be used for recreational activities." So I like the idea of, I, well, I start off by saying, I really like the idea that the mayor commented about heritage property. It is a heritage property that is going to be, you know, educational and engagement activities focusing on open space, natural, I would put educational in that list, and historical values embodied in the conservation easement. I, I think, you know, how you referenced conservation easement is okay, is, is fine here, but I think it's more than just the conservation easement. It's also what we want it to be as a village. And, and so it's not only limited to the historical values that are embodied in that conservation. It's also embodied in our sense of treasure of this as a heritage property. So, you know, embodied in the conservation easement and the fact that this is, you know, a heritage property to the city, might be some way to kind of play with that in there. Visitors to the farm will experience this unique place through nature walks. The word guided learning is a little problematic to me because I think it's learning and education. We heard in the video that Kat put up, talking about it, that she wanted kids being able to go find polywogs and all of those other things that are individual exploration and guided learning perhaps. But the concept there is, that there's not going to be a limit to only guided learning. And community gatherings, my question there is, maybe again, my, my concept of engagement, community gatherings, I want to capture what Susan talked about, having a central place to come forward, but gatherings can be expanded to what, to me, is a gathering of five or 10. Somebody says, oh, a gathering is 500 or 5,000. And I'm a little nervous about the word gatherings for that reason.
So I have a proposal, like actual language to, to address here. This has not been vetted by the team, so feel free to take shots. And Counselor Eber, I, I hear you. We had many similar conversations about what to include on here and how it may not apply to both sides and, or if it does apply, it applies in a different way. I, I will offer to you that, again, remember, the vision statement is the most broad, the highest level, and then we get more specific as we go along. We are going to have a conversation tonight about events where you will be able to specify whether there will be not, we hope to eventually have there be no ambiguity. The, that we, I think we, my, my statement to you would be that in this vision statement, we can be more broad, knowing that we are going to provide the tools to be more specific later on. So here, here's, here's one idea just to, because I, I, I think that there's real merit in adding, especially about the gathering opportunities in ways that city hall is not. So if we just start right at the top, Quincy Farm will serve as a cornerstone of Cherry Hills Village's educational and recreational activities and a place for community gatherings and/or engagement. There's some, maybe a choice there. Focusing on open space and the natural and historical values embodied in the conservation easement. And I'll just, just, I know that I'm, we want to talk about what I'm trying to add, but the natural and historic values embodied in the conservation easement, actually, you know, are tied to very specific things in the conservation easement themselves. So anyway, that's just, I, I think it's a way that we can highlight and acknowledge the role that Quincy Farms is playing within the village that maybe some other places like city hall are not.
So I want to, like, put a, a pin on that for just a second, because the more I am listening to conversation and the more, so when I read this and I see focusing on, if I had to pick one word for Quincy Farm, to me, that word would be heritage more than open space. And as I, as I've let that kind of percolate a little bit, I think that for me personally would have definite implications for goals and objectives that fall underneath that. And so I guess I would be interested to know what the rest of the council thinks about that, right? If the focus is on the heritage, then that might set different goals than if the focus is on open space.
Do you, do you not see heritage encompassed in historical values? I don't know that I'd have a problem adding heritage in front of open space.
I, I guess, I think those are similar, but I, but historic, I don't know. For me, I think it's, it has a slightly different nuance, and the fact that focusing on open space comes in, and I know it goes on to say, and, these other things. And I, I get Rob's point, too, that we're focusing on those things because they're in the conservation easement and we're sort of required to, but.
I think if you add heritage in front of open space, there is.
Yeah, I like that, too.
So, well, let me, like, if you, I, I'd be interested to hear from each of you, if you had to say, focusing on X. Quincy Farm focuses on X. What, what is your X?
I think it is open space, nature, and heritage, but I also want to, because I have the mic for a moment.
Yeah.
I read the definition of Webster's of recreational, and I don't think it's what we mean here. Any form of play, amusement, relaxation used for the purpose of games, sports, or hobbies. I don't think that's what we mean in here. So I'm agreeing with Rob.
Yeah, okay. So recreational maybe is, yeah, okay.
So just to provide some context, recreational, the word recreational is one of the values in the conservation easement. So that's directly where that's coming from.
Well, and my only comment was, is that I thought recreational is a subset of engagement or could be included with engagement, and therefore a broader term of, there's education and there's recreation. I think there's education and to me, there's engagement, and that includes a whole bunch of things. And then I would say focusing on its heritage values, comma, open space, and the natural and historical values embodied in the conservation easement. That's the way, you know, I, I still don't like the word recreational, but what comes after focusing, I would suggest maybe that type of language.
What if we put passive in front of recreational? So we're not taking.
I don't, I think.
I don't think also is passive. Was recreational one of the defined terms in the conservation easement?
Yes.
Recreation or education. So it is one of the conservation purposes under the conservation easement. And that's the same category. The category is recreation or education. But it goes on to talk about the fact that the High Line Canal runs through the property, that you can be walking or jogging or biking on the trail, and that, that is part of Quincy Farm. So that's why we incorporated that as well, because it is, that is an important part of the farm.
Well, I think that's another thing that's important, too, which is to go, and it doesn't have to be this way, but it is, which is, there is a conservation easement on this. It controls the property. There's been a lot of discussion about whether the city has been adhering to or not. Just speaking for myself, it's always been front and center in my mind, always. I'm always looking for words that come out of that conservation easement. We may get more specific to your point, Rob. It doesn't, we can go further than that. It can reflect other values as long as they're not antithetical to the conservation easement. But you start with the conservation easement, never losing sight of it. That means, doesn't mean, but that's my way of thinking with regard to that. And then if I could say, and, and this is an okay thing, I think that's a good thing, on this continuum, and I'm always using that, right, kind of where you're going, to me, when I hear that word heritage, we're going to start, we're going to do something more on that property than if it just said historically. We're going to do more. There's going to be more work done in that regard, maybe this much, maybe that, but it's not the same. And I think that that's important. It's not just throwing in a word. This thing is telling us where and what are we going. This thing is telling us where and what are we going to do. It doesn't mean that it's not our heritage, but when I see that word, that's a big word to me.
So what does it mean to you?
What, what it means is, is when I see that word, you know, a heritage site, a heritage thing at that point in time, I know that people are, it's not just a place to go. It's, we're spending, we're spending our resources and time to continue to teach that, to continue to augment that to the best way possible. That's, that's what I see typically.
Okay.
Yeah. So to me, I, I love the word heritage because it is, it's like where we came from. It is values. It is the past and it is, I think it's vital that, that, and I think it's different than historical. Historical is more facts and, I mean, this is, heritage to me is a living thing. It is cultural, what's your ancestor.
Well, that's why I asked what you meant by cultural, because I was wondering if we were on the same page or.
What's your grandparents, what they grew up with? It's, it's a connection that is deeper than historical, I think. Historical is the facts and the figures, what happened. This is part of who you are. I like the word heritage and to me, nature and heritage are more important than open space and recreational. You know, I think that's the real value of it. There's other open spaces, other places for recreation, but there are not other places in the village for, to the same extent for nature, think about it, there really aren't, and for heritage.
I'd agree with that. Councillor Fisher?
Are we still going around and telling what words?
I mean, it's a free problem, like speak up.
I thought your question was what words.
Oh, yeah, what word, yes. Okay. I think we got off that question, Fisher.
So, so I like heritage too, I agree. I don't know if I like, what did you say, heritage values or did you mean heritage, comma, values? I wasn't sure. I don't know that I've ever heard heritage values lumped together like that. You don't have to answer that right now.
I didn't have a comma.
Oh, you did not? Okay. I like the word legacy and I was thinking legacy when you were talking. And I also would love to see preservation and maybe that's redundant if we have heritage, but, I mean, and redundant when we say it's a conservation easement. But maybe that helps, your comment during our study session, people maybe not understanding the conservation or not knowing about the conservation, maybe preservation reinforces what we all know is what is in a, so those are just a few words that I like for, as far as engage, I agree with engagement, but to me, engagement here is maybe more education, just thinking about the programs that have been offered, that have been successful, were usually, they're, you know, usually have a, a, a learning aspect to them, so some sort of education aspect to them, not just passive.
Yeah, I think of engagement as, as a measure almost, like a quantitative measurement of how many people attended, how many people are on the email list, how many, but that, I think that's a modern interpretation of the word engagement.
I look at it as a verb.
I think we need to consider this in context with the two or the, the key things that were underneath it.
And we can come back to it?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we shouldn't go to that and then, because I think some of that.
Let, let, let me just clarify, not clarify, let me just also offer just for you to think about as we go through this. I, I'll just say heritage, the way it's being described is sometimes one thing. I will tell you, the term heritage can mean a loaded, it can come, sometimes come with other intonations. The first site, if you were to ask me about a heritage site, is like Colonial Williamsburg.
Right.
Yeah.
You're, you're freezing something in time. I don't think that's really what you guys are talking about here today. So I, I, you know.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think we are talking about freezing it in time, but not necessarily, I know that actually the original visioning document I think did talk about, you know, like, what are they called, like a, like Colonial Williamsburg, living history. I mean, I think of Mesa Verde and that's a heritage site. All you do is go walk around and look at cliff dwellings and there are educated, there's a ranger station and educational programs, but there's no actors with, you know, dressed up as Native Americans and, or maybe there are, I don't know.
No, I, I hear what you're saying.
There's also not, and I, I think there's a, there also aren't functions held there, are there? I mean, there's not, there's not probably some of the things that people I think are thinking are going to go on at Quincy Farms, based on what I've been hearing so far, is that where we're thinking going? You wouldn't be doing that necessarily at a heritage site, like, like what you're talking about. And the other thing that I'd say, Karen, is on open space, see, I, this is the biggest piece of open space that's in the city, okay? And while I wasn't the only one here that was on council, it was Katie, I think, at the time when you accepted Quincy Farms.
No, actually, that was even before me.
The point is, is that if open space, which is a major tenant of every master plan that's come along and is the single thing that has basically been the focus of what needs to be expanded within Cherry, Cherry Hills, if open space wasn't a big deal, I don't know that Quincy Farm would ever have been accepted as this gift. I don't know that, I don't know that it would or it wouldn't, but I sit back and I go, I think open space is a big deal when you think in the concept of the master plan.
I, I agree with that and I, I think it deserves a place here. I just don't know that it is the primary thing that I think of because, and, and this is, again, when I say it has implications, I remember having conversations back in the day that, you know, if we just want it to be open space, then we're not doing anything to any of the buildings, they can all fall down. That's open space, right? Open spaces, in my opinion, by definition, has no buildings on it.
Right?
So, so I think that putting.
Move it that way on the continuum as opposed to the other way.
Right. And so that's why I feel like there are part, the, the pastures and all of that are definitely open space and it is very important, but the distinguishing factor between, for me, between Quincy Farm and Mead Park is the heritage of the place, so.
I guess, well, we've got sort of three activities or three focuses on FOKI, on, listed there, and we're talking about adding a fourth, being the historic, heritage. I don't have a problem adding a fourth one. You know, again, to me, the big problem is the word recreational and then later on, when we get there, the concept of the words community gatherings.
And I, I, I totally hear you when, because when I think, when I hear recreational, I hear, I hear those debates about soccer fields. And I don't want anyone to ever think that we ever remotely contemplated, you know, putting soccer fields or.
That's a little bit of where I was going.
Yeah, so that's.
I understand the language and the official documents, but we're not saying something in conflict, we're just describing, I think, our vision for that and, of course, I'll also say, I looked up the definition of heritage and it fits with exactly with what you're talking about. Location that holds cultural, historical or natural significance and is recognized for its value. Very simple definition.
I love the word even more.
Worth to say focusing on preservation of and then list several things? Preservation of, and we could include open space, it may not, may or may not be the very first one, preservation of open space and, and the historical values embodied, you know?
Say that again? The preservation of open space?
Focusing on preservation of and then a list of things.
Yeah. I struggle with that word preservation.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's a, that's a huge, huge loaded word. I mean, again, it's, just understand, and then this is me, right? I mean, I'm a big believer, I come from strategic planning in a lot of ways. Vision is important. There'll be people that sit back and go, and if it's in there, you're going to do it.
That's Rob's point.
And if it's not in there, then you're not going to do it, okay? I mean, and that, that's, and you don't have to. People blow past their mission statements and their vision statements all the time, but you'll never see me talk like that. I mean, I'm, so preservation, I, I'm, I'm going to struggle with that word in there. And then, what was, what was the other?
Recreational, community gatherings and guided.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't remember what it was.
Trouble by community gatherings, Rob, because I think it's going to be defined later.
Well, that's.
Emily, that was your point, right? Same with my, you know, about the scope, what do we mean by community and the like? That's going to come later. By the way, Emily, you're feeling like you really did a great job here with all the wordsmithing and seven different, it, it really is good work.
This is what this meeting is for, so.
Yeah.
That's why we're here.
It's not like she wasn't warned that it would happen. By the way, the thing is, is that, and I think you said, I think everybody has said it, you can't just take, you know, somebody comes waltzing in here and says, hey, look at this vision statement, I want to go do that. You can't do that. You've got to go down and look at the entire, you know, document, whatever we, whatever we said at the end of the day and maybe we need to get on to the key principles.
Right.
I think Emily had a point, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I, that was going to be my suggestion, so thank you perfectly, is that maybe we take this opportunity to run through the key principles and that might inform a little bit of, of this discussion. I will also say that when, when we're getting down into what can and can't happen on the property, this is again, these key principles are only one more layer because it's been quite a long time, but if you'll recall, we will bring to council, once buildings come online and are available for community use, we bring the rules and regulations to city council to review those. And that's when we will get way into the specifics, how many people, what is and is not permitted there, what can the purpose of the gathering be, that type of thing. So we will again have that discussion in detail further down the road also, just to make sure you're aware of that. So for our key principles, we have five of these. So these are really guiding statements to support the vision for the entire property and support our future decision-making and planning for the future for the east side and the west side and the canal for that matter, to a certain extent. So in our, in the next section, that's where we even split it up further, east side, west side, but these are applying to the entire property. We can go through these one by one or we can take them as a whole.
Well, if, if we don't want to go through them one by one, I would highlight specifically the third key principle as a way to.
One by one. I mean, what's the big deal? Hey, anybody got a?
Okay, that's fine. Just, just check. I was going to highlight one in particular, but.
Okay. So our first one, education about nature, conservation, sustainability and local history will be core to the public programming.
Like it?
I like it. Great. There will be, yes, we can, we can just keep going. There will be strong involvement with local schools and planning youth and family programs. That's something that we've definitely heard from council members and from the community in our interactions with them too, so.
So let me just ask a quick question about that. I know, does that mean that we're going to work with schools to provide kind of, you know, opportunities for school groups, et cetera? Or does that mean that if any family programming happens at the farm, it's going to be, it's going to involve schools? I think, because I think it should be the former. I don't think that we're going to, you know, you've planned lots of great family events without input or involvement from any school.
Right. The first one though, that, that's not actually necessarily the truth either. I'm not sure the property can handle a first grade of 35 people in a bus being dropped off, right? We're doing this already, getting input. So all of our art programs tour with Cherry Hills Village teachers, one is with Greenwood Village right now. So input I think is a pretty broad or involvement, it, it's, I think it's a good word because it doesn't pigeonhole us to exactly what does that mean? But we just know we want to, not just Cherry Hills and Greenwood, but we would like Aspen and St. Mary's and West to get involved, to come to the events, to help with ideation of the events. So I think it's, it's a pretty good broad word to talk about, you know, having involvement without being specific.
Sounds like people like that one.
My question.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. My question on the second one is, again, instead of there will be, again, to make it as broad as possible, there can be, or, you know, something that makes it, there may be, or, you know, key principles is they're encouraged to have these type of activities. The other thing that jumps out at me for that is, it's not just about programming, but one of the main things, and it even goes back from when we redid the park right here, is there are huge educational opportunities that it almost parallels back with number one. It's not a, we are providing education about nature, conservation and sustainability. I look at number two as almost being an opportunity for students to do research on this property that will advance our understanding. It's, they teach us as a result of their doing their work. So it's not just planning and family programming, it's research, local schools and educational opportunities, youth and family programs, or, you know, again, I add something in there that makes a component of student research opportunities.
I, I'm not sure this second bullet point belongs on this page actually, because we've got the education piece above. This could be one piece of the education piece. We also will be involved with other nonprofits in the area, such as the Audubon Society, to provide youth and family programs. We also may be involved with other communities that we may do joint programs with. I, to me, this is an outlier. This is something we can do. I don't know that it's a key principle.
I guess that was sort of where I was coming from a little bit, is that, you know, if, if local schools at some point said, oh, we're too busy, we don't have time, we're not going to stop doing what we're doing. So I don't think, I think it would be great, but I agree, it's maybe not a key principle.
We have no issue removing this one if council doesn't feel that it fits with the rest of the principles. It's certainly something we can just keep doing on our own without listing it here.
And maybe, maybe it does, maybe there is some, you know, goal or strategy about engaging with local schools.
Yeah, it could be added to the third one, targeted to the local community, including local schools.
Well, and I would, I would go back and say, if you're going to drop that second one out, will be core to the public programming and research opportunities or something like that, and provide research opportunities. Again, that's part of education.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, Rob, but I don't know that I've ever heard research opportunities come up in conversation with Quincy Farm.
But again, if people want to go there and do research and whatever they can, this is what we're going to do.
Right.
And you really want to, you really want to be.
As a core principle.
Providing that as a, as a city?
Well, I think it's absolutely our responsibility to provide opportunities for, you know, same way if somebody came to you and said, I want to research the history of Cherry Hills, we would help them. It would be the same thing with respect to, you know, sampling water quality and maybe we're getting too far in the weeds for a key principle.
That's what I'm saying. I, I, I agree with you. I think research is part of it, but isn't it covered by education? Isn't research a?
Well, but where I go though is, will be core to the public programming and I'm just saying there's more than just public programming. It's public programming and activities.
To me, the, the key thing of point number two is youth and family. And I saw that in the, in the earlier visioning, the 2014 visioning, is a concept of we want it to be a place for young people and, and so on. So, and so the schools have a, an involvement there, but it's not exclusive to the schools, could be the Audubon Society or other things. So, but to me, that concept of youth and family, I think is important.
So I've heard a couple of things and I, that are kind of gelling. One suggestion would be that the first bullet point, rather than saying public programming, could just say core to the. could just say core to the, something like activities held at the farm, whether it's programming or whatever.
Site activities.
Two, could be revised to be, to emphasize a focus on youth and family somehow, but take the school part out and move it. I liked the suggestion of outreach and engagement efforts for Quincy Farm will be primarily targeted to the local community and schools, I like that. And so then we're left with that fa, youth and family, which I do think is a key principle, I think, I agree with you. And so I, I, that would be a completely different wording there that...
You could say something about activities will, uh, core activities will be centered around youth and family.
Or to attract youth and family, or...
Yeah.
I, I would hesitate to say core-centered, because we absolutely have activities that are not at all centered on youth.
I think you can just, I mean, I think that's all, and that's all encompassed by local community, but if you wanted to detail, say, local community, comma, including youth families and schools, I think it's somewhat redundant.
Or particularly youth family and schools, or... 'Cause we are saying we wanna emphasize that.
Well, the one thing I just wanna, wanna say on that number one, when you said, take out public program activities, number one's talking about, really, about the programming, right? It's not saying, just because that's talking and speaking about the programming...
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that there aren't other activities going on there. It's saying, this is what we're gonna be do, and, and this basically has been what we're doing. Every programming we've done so far has been about nature, conservation, sustainability, and I don't know how much we've done on local history at this point in time, but, but the rest, that's, that's been our programming.
So I, I guess, I'm trying to boil it down, the, the principle, in, there are two principles embodied in that. One is that there's gonna be programming.
Right, that's right.
And number two is that it's gonna be about, it's gonna be education about nature, conservation, et cetera, et cetera. And so I, I definitely think that if the fact that there is public, and that, that is, that is a question for this council, right, if public programming, because prior to Quincy Farm, the city really didn't, I mean, we did, we have a few events we do every year, but I wouldn't really call that sort of a extensive public programming. And so I do think, if there's consensus here, that there will be public programming at Quincy Farm. And so actually, I, maybe it just needs to say that. Like, there will be public programming at the farm, and it will be focused on...
Well, no, that's, that's even stronger.
This is much more eloquently worded.
Exactly, and a little bit more flexibility than, there will be. I mean, I'd rather keep it this way, which basically is only maybe one level removed. It is basically saying that we're having public programming. I don't know if I'd wanna make it any stronger than that, I wanna, you know, leave as much wiggle room as we can. But your point, though, Mayor, was exactly right on. You know, it might, like you say, there will be versus this, but it ain't going, hey, we can just abandon it. This is saying we're gonna be doing that, which, you know...
Which has implications for staffing and partnerships and whatever, right?
I would like to say that the third one to me is a self-inflicted black eye. And, you know, the, the best example would be, we were all circulated, and I read separately too, the quote of a ma, a governor spokesman on, today about the lawsuit that was filed, that we may talk about later. But it was about all the public land use challenges that just got filed. But the quote was something to the effect of, look at it that these rich communities are spending money on lawyers and lawsuits rather than building affordable housing for us. And if we're talking about, you know, doing regional compacts or regional activities to help bring housing to the region, and then we're going to say that we're only targeting our local community, I think it just reeks of elitism, and we don't want the other people here. And while that may or may not be true, the fact is, it's really an implementation principle and not a key principle of how we do that factor that there will be programming.
And if I could just...
So I would dump it.
If I could just add some context to this one in particular, prior to, I'm sure that will generate some conversation. This was our attempt to answer the question that, that Councilor Heller brought up earlier. You know, what, what is this facility? What, you know, what, what does it look like? And, and who's it trying to, who are we trying to reach? And that's really what this is trying to accomplish. From that perspective, we thought that answering that question is absolutely a key principle, because it goes, it, it cascades down to so many other decisions that we would make. And I think from the team perspective, everything that we've heard from the public, but also in the one-on-one interviews with city council members, and some of the public that we've heard on over the years, there has been a real rejection of this being a statewide attraction, or even a front-range attraction, because of all the other externalities that that would bring. And so the impacts to the quality of life of residents nearby and up and down Quincy, and... So this was our attempt to reflect what we thought we had heard. With that said, I just wanted to provide that as context, that's why we're here, is for council to discuss it, and if that's not correct, now's the time to, to...
Well, I think, I think one of the things, and I put this to you, Rob, which is, if it wasn't in there, I mean, I look at it this way, if it wasn't in there, okay, it's not in there. For me, it's still the direction to staff, that is still the direction. That is what I want to do, which is to say, hey, spend your time and your, and your efforts on targeting our local community, whether it's in there or not. Now, knowing that, does that change your mind about whether you're having more transparency in putting in there as a key principle or not?
Again, I think that it is an implementation methodology of where you go do your marketing. You know, yes, I'm sensitive to the idea that this is not supposed to be for everybody from everywhere coming, but, boy, I just have a huge problem with saying that we're doing something for ourselves, and we really don't want, I mean, you can do it, I, I guess my point is...
We aren't saying we don't want.
You're making that directive on how you do the marketing, but you don't need to say, 'cause it just screams of elitism to me.
I, I, I think it belongs in there, and I'm not sure if that's the right word or not, but I thought it was kind of a brilliant term, because it is a little amorphous, right? I don't think it means Cherry Hills Village only. Yep, you had, I think you talked about Greenwood Elementary, right?
And there's Denver.
You know, so it's loose enough, but it also has a connotation that it's not regional or statewide. That's why I kinda liked it.
I, I agree with Rob on this one, and I, I think, one, there's an optics issue, and it can be misinterpreted very easily. I think it is a marketing issue, that maybe not is a key principle. You know, we're always gonna make decisions about who are we marketing to, which I assume is what targeted to the local community means, but maybe I'm wrong on that. I just don't know that we need to, I mean, I think in the situation we are in the state right now, we will be criticized for having that. And to be fair, we don't have any thi, we, we accept people off the canal who come into Quincy Farm. We, we have nothing that says this is, you know, you must show your driver's license to come in, you have to live in the village.
Well, that's why it doesn't say, you know, visitation or attendance, right.
I don't know that we need to have that in the key principles.
So, so just, just my way of example, in some other communities that I've worked, you might have a hierarchy of parks, open space, and trails. And you might have a regional park that attracts people from outside the city. And then you might have a, a community park that is primarily for citywide attraction, and then you might have local parks that are really just for a neighborhood. I would offer to you that it is absolutely, there is precedent all over the place for making a statement like this. I'm not saying that you have to have it or don't have to have it, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that there is, this isn't, was, this wouldn't be out of the blue and totally unusual.
But, and Emily, let me ask you this, 'cause I remember when we were doing, when you were doing the grant request for John Mead Park, and there, from Arapahoe County, and there was specific language in there about it had to be open to people other than just in the community. That, 'cause I remember that you had a section that said, there's a bus stop nearby, and people can access it. And I don't know if, I, I, you're right, we're not saying it's closed to other people.
Right.
But if, if this really is just, here's who we're gonna market it to, I'm not sure that's a key principle. I guess that's where I'm coming from, kinda like, yeah, we're gonna involve local schools in planning youth and family programs, but that's not a key principle.
So, I, I think it is a key principle, because, I mean, we talk about education, about local history. To me, local community doesn't imply residents of Cherry Hills Village, it's broader than that. But it is, we don't want it to be regional or on, you know, focused on drawing people here from all around, along the front range. I think it is important to state that it's focused on the local community.
Well, moreover, at least as of right now, outreach and engagement is a prime, one of the prime functions of the land preserve, it doesn't mean that if the land preserve is not here, whatever. That is one, and in fact, you may recall, the, one of the meetings we had, I challenged on that, and I said, I wonder if it even should be anymore. But it is, there, that is one of the things that we've wanted them to do, because we keep approving the plan, that has outreach and engagement in it. All right, well, if it's one of the main things, then it begs the question, well, then who are you going to? And we're saying, one of those main drivers is gonna be targeted to the local community.
I, I would offer to you that, as a staff, we would probably, whatever you filled that, that last part in, right? The Mad Libs, the outreach and engagement efforts for Quincy Farm will be primarily targeted to, whatever you wanted to fill in, the metro area, the front range, the state, local community, that will, we would use that as a basis for how we would then plan certain things. Parking, for example. What kind of structures we would need on site. Some of them, just from a practical perspective, bathrooms. But that then suddenly starts to drive some big-picture decisions. So that's why, I guess, as a team, we thought it was a good key principle, because it's helping set a scale of what the site can carry, in essence.
And I think it also has, for me, when we do get to the point where we're talking about how we're gonna pay for it, there's, in my mind, there's a big difference between, you know, tax dollars being used to outreach and promote to the people who are paying those taxes, and potentially some adjacent communities versus tax dollars being used to engage and promote the Denver metro region. You know, that, that will have how we pay for it implications for me when we get to that point.
I guess the other thing, too, just thinking about it, we have outreach and engagement efforts on other things that we do. We talk about our trails in the crier, which only goes to village residents. We put signs up, we say, come to, to the car show, come to the movie night, come to this. It's only to, everybody's welcome.
It's to anyone who drives by.
Right, they all can come, but the, the engagement effort, the outreach is just, is local.
But I don't, I don't think we're objecting to that. I don't think Rob and I are saying we want it to be regional or statewide.
No, 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 I get that, yeah. Oh, no, no, yeah, yeah.
And, and I understand, Chris, City Manager, what, what you're saying, that that is a driver that drives many other things. I, I just worry we're gonna get criticized for having the language as a key principle. But I'll, I'll defer to a, a vote on that, or, you know, the majority on that.
I, I too, I mean, if, if we had a vote, I'd still vote to take it out, but, you know, if it stays in, I understand, using the word local community, it doesn't only say Cherry Hills Village. But I don't think that it needs to be there, and when you put it on the scale of the risk-reward, I think it's gonna yield a black eye, or could be used to yield a black eye.
I know Karen wanted to jump in, but just, does it help to, 'cause I think we, did we talk about adding and schools here, plural? Which helps, maybe?
That's what I was gonna say, too, that if we added and school to the local, it's primarily targeted to the local community and local schools. We're talking about not, not using our resources to target outside of, and not using our resources to plan for things that are going to attract people. I, I think it belongs here.
And I would say, I think our audience is residents. I, I, I really don't care so much what people from Denver think about this plan, I really don't. And are they gonna sue us over it? Are they gonna cause some harm?
No, I do think Councilor McGuire brings up a point about grant funding. Grant funding maybe is a consideration, but...
And I'll agree, it's not just grant funding, it's also that if we really don't want to have housing issues slammed on us, we're gonna be looking for regional solutions, and, you know, we've talked about this, you know, being, you know, we have parks, you guys can build housing type of idea, that, I don't have any problem with marketing, I have no problem with any of the marketing being focused, I just don't like to say it.
Well, and the other, I guess the other thing, too, which is, you know, and maybe Ellen might wanna look at, but, I mean, I'm surprised you guys aren't out there twitching in your chairs with that word, "marketing", because that's really not, I mean, it is on a broad sense, but that's not what outreach and engagement really is and what the land preserve has been doing. I don't think you'd call that marketing. I mean, you might under the broad umbrella of it, but it's, it's something else. But maybe it isn't, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it is marketing.
Well, certainly the engagement is all about a lot of our volunteers and ambassadors, and that's growing and growing, we now have twenty-six ambassadors, we started with five. And that is in this community, so...
But some of them are from Greenwood Village, right? So, I mean, not all Cherry Hills are...
Yeah, one from Sedalia, who moved from Greenwood Village. So it's, but we did, that was crafted very carefully, primarily targeted. So, you know, in, in Earth Day, we had sixty-nine families from Cherry Hills Village, and sixty-eight, say, from neighboring communities. So it is split, it's just the, the outreach and the engagement efforts, that's the only part we're talking about, that I think, if I'm a resident and I'm donating, you know, that makes me happy, that it's focused on the local community. And we also chose that local community, not CHB specifically, so...
Well, it feels like, even though there are some dissenting thoughts, it feels like the, yeah, the, the, the majority of the council keeps that with the addition of the local community and schools. Adding schools. Okay, let's move on to the next one.
Okay. All programs, activities, and site improvements will comply with the conservation easement. This was really just our, our nod back to that document and its importance.
And I, yes, and I do, I appreciate that, I think, given the contentious discussions and challenges that have taken place, I think it's very important for us to be clear beyond any doubt that it is the city's intention to comply with the conservation easement. Now, to the extent that compliance with the conservation easement is debatable, then, but our intent is to comply with conservation.
I hate to do this, wordsmithing, but isn't it really adhere to, not comply with?
I don't know, you attorneys in the room...
I don't think it's, it's, well, anyways.
I, I think we've used both phrases to mean the same thing.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, you might get a, a semantic opinion. Because I, I do think at some level that it's not that much of a difference, but compliance is usually used in following things that have the force of law. So that tends to be the way I would go. Not the policymaker here. All right, sounds good.
And then the last one was based on a lot of discussion amongst our team. This is, private events may be permitted in a way that is consistent with the vision for the property, limit impact to the farm, and maintain public access to the site. So some context for this, we do think that... for this, we do think that giving the community the opportunity to have private events might be a very appealing option. We do want to make sure, and we had this discussion at length, that we wouldn't be having private events that then take over the entire site, closing the whole thing to public access. We felt very strongly that it's important, but, you know, we don't want to start booking event, private events at Quincy Farm every weekend, and folks can't go take a walk on the nature trail or walk into the barnyard. So, this is something that many more details will have to be worked out, like I alluded to before, but.
And, and.
That's why it made it into the key principle.
And I, and I think that was very well said. I would offer to you, this may be one where we, let's go through, we have an exercise for you shortly. You may have seen the exhibit with the matrix of the, we, we get more into the details of events in that matrix. So, so maybe we, if, if someone does have an issue or possible changes or deletion or whatever, maybe let's circle back to this one. And speak now that you'd like to circle back to it, but, but I think we should do the matrix first.
For me, this is the, the most important one on the page and the most feedback I've heard over the years from my community and now on council. And it's a tad too open-ended for me, especially when we said the first, the vision would be, you know, more clarified by the principle. It's not. It feels very circular. So, I, I get that limit impact, but there's nothing that limits the size of the event or, you know, again, traffic or parking or, so this, this one's just a little too open-ended for me, just.
So, I guess the question, ultimately, for me, the key principle is whether we allow private events or not.
Correct.
Like, that's the first question.
And that's why, that's what does say.
Obviously, with some parameters or whatever, but are they allowed at all?
And that's why it says may, right?
Yes.
To give us flexibility.
But I guess the question I'm asking the council is.
The meat and coconut is that maintain public access to the site. And by the way, it's not an absolute. There may be people that would want to bring 500 people in for, you know, for a wedding, you know, if you said that, and not care whether the site is open. I don't believe that would happen. I believe that if we sit back and say the site is going to be open, almost by definition, it starts to push it towards very small private events.
Or, if, I mean, if you're telling someone that they're, and assuming they would be paying to rent this facility, and that somebody could walk into their party and start eating their food and, like, nobody's going to do that. But we can have that debate.
I think that is actually what we are assuming was, that conversation is what we're assuming was going to happen when we get to the matrix about the events.
But let me, let me just ask the first question. Is there anyone who feels that we should not have private events at the property at all?
I want to raise the question first and say, are we legally permitted, as a public piece of property, to deny public use of the property when we allow public use of all our other open spaces?
I mean, I would just say, we, we reserve park shelters. We, you know, it's similar that there's, as long as you're not, I have not researched this extensively, and Emily may have a lot more to say, but there, there's a way for the public to have access to public facilities in a way that is private for them at that point in time. The use of City Hall or use. We have a property policy that in.
Well, but that's my point, is we allow member, private use of a public facility already. Could we not then say, but we don't mean that at Quincy Farm. Is it, if somebody said, I want to have a private picnic at Quincy Farm, must we allow that? Because whether it's a wedding, a picnic.
Well, they have to get a permit. They have to get, like, an event.
I know.
And so, we could, I think we probably can say we don't offer that. It's not a reservable space. Denver does that. They're.
Absolutely. For sure. Yeah.
Yes.
Prohibited.
Different than a First Amendment expression. This is different than, you know, open, public forum. This is a different sort of analysis when you're talking about managing city property.
So, the answer is, if we chose not to allow any private events, we aren't running into legal problem. Because, like you just said.
Because we do them other places.
There are certain places that you can say, just, we don't have them.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, so with that said, now it's a question of, do we want them or don't we want them?
At Quincy Farm.
To me, the conservation easement has cat saying, you know, a good party every once in a while is a good thing. But, on the other hand, and to Earl's comment, I think this is going to become the hottest wedding venue in Denver, and they'll rent a parking space from the churches, and they'll bust their people in. It's just too damn pretty.
Well, and I think we can talk, let's talk about that, the details of what, you know, are there any parameters that could be put around it to control it? But the, I, just as a kind of thumbs up, thumbs down, or is there anyone who feels that we shouldn't allow it at all?
With the right parameters.
With the right parameters, we're good. Okay. So, in, in my opinion, in that case, I do think that there should be a key principle that addresses that private events are permitted. Maybe, maybe permitted. So, yeah, and then now let's move on. I guess, let's kind of put a tack in that, and let's talk about what, under what, under what conditions would that work?
And I would offer to you.
Oh, wait, yeah, I'm sorry.
I would offer to you that we, we have that in order with a matrix that we're going to go through.
Yeah.
And I think it's important for council to consider the answers to those questions in context with all the other activities that are on that matrix. So, I would, I would recommend that we just go through the, keep going through the PowerPoint as we have it.
Okay.
We can, but I'm, I'm still not good with the language here.
Okay.
Because it is, in a way, and then it lists three things, that may not be able to limit it the way that, that we're talking about.
Right. So, I'm sorry. What I meant was, private events may be permitted, dot, dot, dot.
Yes, but then I'm good.
And then let's, let's talk more about.
Fair.
Right?
Understood.
Yes, okay. All right, so let's, keep going then.
Okay, I am not really going to go through this in detail, just to say that the next section in this visioning document are more detailed narrative sections, talking about what the east side is really going to look like with more specifics that narrow down what can and can't happen on the site. And then the west side, same thing, you know. So, the east side being the more active educational hub of programming. We do use that hub word in this narrative section. And making sure that those facilities support the activities that we're planning on that side. The west side will be the more natural area, more passive encounter, you know, individual encounters with nature, less programming, but not no programming. So, that's an important distinction between the two.
And that's as it's kind of described in the easement, too, right? So, there's, that is consistent.
And I guess the only thing that this doesn't address to me on the west side is, if you've got the Hopkins House and whether or not you have the Anderson House, is that what we call it?
Main house.
Main House. You may have different, you may have things that go on inside those houses that are not more passive and individual encounters with nature.
That's correct. Yeah, sorry, this, this slide isn't meant to be, you know, they're, they're in much more detail in the document. This slide is really my quick summary. So, it doesn't encompass everything that's, that's going to happen.
I just want to say that my favorite words on this page were that visiting farm animals can be accommodated in the big barn. One of the things we talked a lot about during the visioning committee is how wonderful it would be to have the presence of animals on the farm. And there are a variety of ways that that could happen, but I, I love the fact that that is, I would love to have animals visiting regularly.
I think that we are going to have Petey the Horse on June 22nd in, in the barn. So, yes, the last two stalls of the barn are designed to be able to have horses or other animals in them still. So, we plan on making that happen.
But I think, Susan, back to your point, though, with the bullets that Emily has up here, and then the actual reading of the narrative, meaning, because I think you might, I think that does start to constrict a little bit. Okay, I would read it that way. And if you want it more expansive, then you'd have a problem with that language. That's my, that's my sense. Not you, but someone who wanted something more expansive would have a problem with that language.
You're talking about the west side narrative?
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
And, and as we get to the matrix, which is the very next slide, this one, we're going to go through these line by line. I would offer to you that the two narrative sections on the east and west side reflect the choices that you see up here. If you, if we have this conversation and council ends up changing the, these activities, we will have to go back and then change the narratives. This is a tool to inform how we can write the, the narratives. So, that allows us to not necessarily have to wordsmith as a committee tonight. We can get your specific direction and make sure those two sections reflect the direction you give to us tonight.
So, let me ask kind of the obvious question, though. The west side has another building on it.
Yes, right.
It's not mentioned.
And, and it says possibilities. So, shouldn't we have the main house there? Because we're not saying it's going to stay there. It's a possibility.
So, I, I think, and Emily, I'm going to ask you to jump in here, too. We have all sorts of structures that are not listed on here.
True.
And we, again, we are not wanting this document to be a full-blown master plan. I, I think that, this is my own opinion now, that I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee. Uh-oh, where's he going? I, I think that the goals and objectives would be the appropriate place for either a specific direction about the Anderson House, or a goal and, or objective related to an evaluation of the Anderson House. I think there's merits with either one of those. I don't necessarily think, I think the intent of this slide is really to talk about big picture activities, less so about specific structures.
And I, so I absolutely appreciate that, and I don't want to get tangled up in, you know, what has been an impediment so much in the past. My main concern, though, is really just timing, about how long do we have before we really do have to decide one way or another? You know, that house is not improving with age and weather and, how long do we have before we have to really do something?
So, yeah. Just to give council a quick overview, so there's no sort of maintenance standard requirement in the conservation easement. So, I'll say that. I will also say that we have the historic structure assessment for that house, and it is structurally in pretty good shape. I don't have any construct, you know, structural concerns that that house, you know, is going to start leaning over or become unsafe or anything like that. So, really, there is no ticking clock. Yeah, there's no immediate need to address that house. We have every option available to us, you know, repaint the outside, re-sign the outside just to make it cosmetically look better, and leave the interior alone. But there is no real-time pressure to make a decision about that house coming from a structural concern or from the conservation easement.
And are there any significant capital investments, I'm thinking like a new roof to prevent, you know, if the roof starts leaking, then the house potentially is lost no matter what. Don't want to put a new roof on a house that we're going to decide six months later, right? So, are there any things like major expenditures that?
No, the house is watertight right now. We are treating it for rodents, since it's a vacant house that, you know, in a field, that happens. But really, we keep the heat on enough that the pipes don't freeze, you know, we keep the water on. And.
Okay.
Other than that, we do basic maintenance if, you know, a gutter starts to lean off the house or something like that. But, no, there aren't significant upcoming capital projects that need to be addressed, even just to keep it.
So, we have time to let this process work?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
When you say this process work, and you're going like this.
This, this, this visioning, and then goals and objectives, and then letting that drive decisions around what facilities we might need and how things might be used. And we don't have to, we don't have to decide right now, or within the next six months, or even potentially in the next year, whether there is some long-term use for that particular structure or not.
So, you're talking specifically regarding the Andersons. And I agree. I think there's time. But I think that as we're going through this and doing this, it is starting to narrow.
Yes.
It would be very difficult. I mean, for instance, if some of these things go the way that they are now, and this council says yes, it'd be very difficult to go back in and say, you know what, we're going to go spend three, four, or five million dollars, redo that house, we're going to have big parties there. I don't think this would allow that to happen. That's important.
Well, we haven't gotten there yet, but we, you know.
There'd be language in here that basically would, would restrict that.
I haven't come across anything that restricts that yet.
Well, I mean, you know, when you sit, when you sit back and say the west side is more passive, limited, I mean, that's.
Well, that's why.
These words have meaning.
But then it specifically calls out the Hopkins House and talks about having program, and so, do we need to?
It specifically calls out the Hopkins House. It specifically calls it out.
Then maybe we do need to.
Then we need to add the Anderson House. In the event, city, the city decides to maintain the Anderson House.
If you wanted to do that, I think that's what you need to do.
You're not going to have, you're not going to maintain a house and not do anything.
I, can I add a little bit of clarity about why the Hopkins House is called out, both in the possibilities matrix and in the narrative for the west side, but the Anderson House is not. The garage is also not. The pump house is also not. All of those structures are on the west side of the farm. We specifically included plans for the Hopkins, or verbiage about the Hopkins House, because it's specifically required by the conservation easement that we maintain that structure. So, we, anticipating that we're following the conservation easement, and we're going to have the Hopkins House, started, you know, anticipating those uses, the uses and treatment of all of the other buildings on the west side can wait, really, but also are more flexible under the conservation easement than that Hopkins House is. So, we know we're keeping the Hopkins House, right? Like, the conservation easement says that we have to.
Yeah, but so, Earl, to your point, if, if on this matrix, we can have private events in the Hopkins House, which is on the west side.
Right.
Then, by, and this language allows that, then by definition, it would allow that in the big house, too, in the main house, because it's also on the west side.
Well, let's just say, I think we need to agree one way or the other, that either by not having the Anderson House in here, we're, we're not saying that it can't be used for events, or we agree, we're specifically excluding the Anderson House, and it'll never be used for events, which I don't think is what anybody's anticipating, except maybe you.
Right.
But, but I don't.
Then one of the things you are saying, then, is, we're going to get to it, which is what Chris has been saying all along, is let's get to this matrix.
Yeah.
Because these letters are going to change.
Potentially.
Well, no, no, I think, I think they're definitely going to change based on what I'm hearing right now. It wouldn't change if it was me. But, I mean, I think they're going to change. And then that's going to change.
Yeah. So, I guess the understand, let's, and for the purposes of this discussion, the west side, the Hopkins House is called out specifically because it is a specific structure in the easement that has its own specific requirements. Then there, the west side, as for the purposes of this discussion, refers to everything else on the west side.
What I would suggest is that there's a, another column next to the Hopkins House that says, all other structures, and then we just have a TBD next to all of them.
Well, yeah, but I think it's east side and west side also matters, because the east side, for example, there's the farmhouse, there are those stables, there's, and those will be, I, I think those are falling under the east side.
So, we could say, other west side structures.
So, just to be clear, the matrix isn't going to be in the document.
Yes. This is just for our discussion.
This is a tool to go through this so that you can give us direction of what's going to be reflected in the east and west narrative sections. So, if there is direction like that, we will take it. I don't think we need to spend a bunch of time reformatting the matrix, just because it's a tool.
Okay.
But, but I do want to mention, we're talking a lot about structures, but there is a lot to the west side, or east side, but I'm thinking of the west side, that is not, quote, a structure.
That's why you've got west side.
Somebody wants to put a tent up in the middle of a grass space. It doesn't fall anywhere.
Or the lawn next to the house.
The lawn, that's.
That's west side, though.
Well, but that's my point. It's west. Well, but that's my point, it's West Side, but you might, I mean, right now it has an N, but that was going to be part of my question is how did we get to these letters other than to use it as an exercise, which I agree. But we may want to think whether or not weddings are allowable. Are weddings of a certain size allowable, if we are allowing weddings, but not ones of other sizes? And, you know, all of these things, private events, blah, blah, blah. Somebody wants to have a two-hour corporate event on the West Side lawn or on the West Side in the trees, those type of things we need to take into account.
And the good news is, I think our team covered, talked a lot about those. Specifically, things like weddings with tents versus weddings that a few people walk up and then leave. So my recommendation to the council is that we go through these now, one by one. I, I do think we can give you context as to what we were thinking, but we fully acknowledge the reason we're going through this exercise is this is really where the rubber starts hitting the road, and these very well may change.
Can I ask one question? When you say close access to site, you mean the entire East and West Side? So you could close access to one side and not the other side?
Well, it's by side, but I think the more important thing is, would the entire West Side be closed if you had an event there? Versus, you could have an event and maybe a portion of the site is not available, but the remainder of the site is. This happens at, for example, the Denver Botanic Gardens, they have weddings there. They'll close off one of those little sections in the middle. You can still pay your ticket, you can still walk around, you can still probably crash their reception. You'll get in their wedding photos. And it does not slow anybody down from going to that.
Let me also ask a question about the yeses and nos and limited. That's based on what exactly, like?
Our recommendation.
Recommendation, okay, so it's not restrictions in the easement, it's not language in this document, it's, it's discussion and consensus of the team.
And does this reflect the land preserves recommendations, too?
Everything, everything that we're talking about tonight, we have worked on together.
Okay.
Yes, we are on the same page. Katie, to answer your question, we, it's not just our discussion, I mean, things from the conservation easement and restrictions like that have been incorporated into this, but they're not the only reason that we might say.
Like for caretaker, for example, I know that is actually a possibility. You're just saying you don't think we should have one, right? So that's a possibility versus a recommendation, I, is where I would just want to come back.
Yes, sorry, so these are our recommendations about what should and should not happen on the site based on our experience and.
And the historical documents and the council interviews and the feedback that we've heard through previous exercises, and it's a whole synthesis of where we think we've, where we're at.
Yes. I will say to start, this, what's on your screen is not the same thing that was in your packet. We actually had a team meeting after the packets came out and refined this further, so it's more detailed, that's where the limited came from instead of just yes or no. And it's, it's not, every possibility and just as a reminder, it's not developing those nitty-gritty rules for the property. There will be 40 spaces, et cetera. This is going to inform those more detailed rules and restrictions that would come back to council at a later date.
The other thing, too, Emily, I think is that there could be other rows here. There could be, which, we talked about that, it's like council may have had, why don't you add this on there with a yes or no?
Yes.
So if there is something, throw it out, because.
So to kick us off for programming, obviously, we're anticipating all types of programming, all types of educational programming happening on the East Side, similar to what we do and the land preserve does right now. And same with the Hopkins House, we're anticipating programming happening in that facility. The reason the West Side says limited is that there are less types of programming that we anticipate happening on the West Side as a whole, Hopkins House aside. So for example, in those pastures, you would have a bird walk with the Audubon Society, but you're not going to have a birthday party outside in the pasture. So that's the reasoning for that limited.
Well, birthday party wouldn't be programming, right? That would be.
Well, yeah, sorry.
Like what wouldn't you have for programming on the West Side?
Um, really, yeah, goat yoga, that's a good example. Since it is the more passive side, you know, we just don't anticipate sometimes the level of, of activity that we'd be doing on the East Side. Yeah, please.
Things like all the barnyard animals. We actually have a, a chicken coop on the East Side. We have stalls, that's where the horses go. The baby barn is where we put all the goats. We don't have any structures on the West Side. So it's a natural barnyard for barnyard animals, and that's where most of that kind of programming would go on the East Side.
Yeah, and I get that, I guess what I, there are definitely different areas where it makes sense to hold certain programs where it might, but that's not what limited programming means to me. Limited programming means we're not really going to do very much of that over there. It doesn't mean that, well, most of the programs are more appropriate over here. It means we're not going to allow as many programs on the West Side as we are on the East Side. And I guess the, I don't, I can't think of any program that I, that we, we've talked about, you know, that, that meets these principles that wouldn't be allowed on the West Side.
This isn't necess.
The West Side is, you know, it's not the Hopkins House, right? So it's really think of that lawn area, honestly, or the pasture. And so there's no, I mean, at least currently, how we're using its structure, and we need, you know, some cover for weather and, and all, and or tents.
See, this is where I'm struggling, because there's the garage, there's the main house, there's like, you could have a painting class in the garage.
So, um, to give a little bit of context that might be helpful, we had had in your original matrix just yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. We added this limited designation because looking at some of the categories, like visiting animals, for example, that's if I can jump down to that, we anticipate different visiting animals, right, on the East Side and the West Side, and we were trying to find a way to distinguish between just saying yes and yes, because it is going to look different, the activities that are happening. But now, hearing this conversation, I think it might be more confusing than, um, yeah, than, than we should have just stuck with yes, because the limited is sort of drilling down another level, and maybe that's a little bit more granular and at, at our, you know, we're at the programming level.
It could mean frequency, it could mean type, uh, limited.
So it might be more helpful to, to disregard those limiteds and just know that that's the land preserve and staffs, yeah.
I don't know about disregard, it just may have a different limited type depending upon the category.
Just treat it as a yes and know that the land preserve and staff are, are sensitive to the fact that some things just fit better on one side of the property than the other, and that's what we were trying to get across.
Well, and with that said, I understand that the idea of what fits is great until somebody says, it's legible, permissible under the environmental covenant, and I want to do it. And then you're in a situation where you say, but we don't think it fits.
Then we have rules for that, that's the next level down.
So if somebody comes in and let's say they want to study owls, and what better place to study owls, not during mating season, not during hatching season, is than to put 50 card table chairs out in the middle of the pasture for the door study.
You got to stay, you got to stay on the path, that's the point, is, is that on the East Side, you, I, I don't know what kind of programs you might have, they're all over that field, maybe, I don't know. You couldn't, you couldn't do that by definition in the West Side because you have to stay on the trail.
That's all.
That's our rule, and we're allowed to have rules.
So they say, I'm going to put my 50 seats on the, on the path.
Well, I, yeah, I, I mean, I see what you're saying, but I, I think that the, for me, the key is, so first of all, we're talking about programming right now, not, not somebody coming in and wanting to, this is generally programming that, well, but we've, so we either can allow it or not allow, we don't have to. Every organization that comes and says, I want to run a program at your facility, we don't have to allow that. Programming in this context, as I interpret it, is programming being offered by the city, which we said is a key principle, you know, we would do. And at this point, our mechanism for providing programming is to partner with the land preserve.
So again, I, but I do think it brings up the question that yes, all of our programming is through the land preserve, but if the Audubon Society, just as the same way, I want to reserve this park for, you know, a lecture, if the Audubon Society wanted to reserve Quincy Farm, could it right now to have a program? As long as they're willing to follow our rules, meaning they would stay out of the pastures and stay on the trails, and they would follow all our rules, could they present their own program at Quincy Farm?
I would almost categorize that as a private event at that point. If we're not offering it, it's a private, it's, it's up to them and they're, yeah. Unless we want to partner with them, that's a private event.
And isn't the, I mean, we're going to allow.
And we've already addressed the question that private events can be included at Quincy Farm if we want them to.
And what were you, so what I am concerned about is, to, to your point, Earl, when you said the rules are you have to stay on the path. If the city and the land preserve wanted to do a butterfly event, and you can't see the butterflies from 50 yards away on the path, are you telling me that we can't allow people to walk off the path to go look at the butterflies? Well, and that's, so that's what I'm concerned about in that, I don't want to provide, I don't want to put those restrictions on ourselves. If it's allowed under the conservation easement, then I think the city should have the ability to do those things and decide on a case-by-case basis as to whether we want to do those programs.
Yeah, but, but one of the things, one of the things is important, I mean, again, and it's subject to interpretation. The reason that trail is there, and again, I don't know if we ever put an imprimatur or, you know, stamp on this, but the point is, is that the conservation easement says that there will be limited public access to the West Side. And the way we constructed that was basically, no, was basically by saying, hey, you need to stay on the path, you know, we all know where, where other people have come from. Limited means you can't have people coming on whenever they want, how many, no. We're limiting where they can be standing or how they travel through. That is limiting the public access. Well, we can't then go, okay, well, I mean, we can.
Yeah, we can, actually.
But then I'm going, but then I'm going, well, I know, then I'm going, so where is the limited public access?
The limit is that people can't walk around and look at butterflies whenever they want. They can do it either from the trail on their own or they can do it as part of a program operated by the city, which is allowed under the conservation easement.
I get your point, I see that, I mean.
Well, the, this says that the West Area must be managed consistently and used primarily as a natural area with limited public access. So a natural area, subject to the foregoing, it may be used for agricultural and preservation uses. It didn't say you can use it as a classroom, the, the.
Well, it's not even a, a classroom, but you can have, it doesn't say you can't have programs in it.
It says it can be used for agriculture and preservation uses.
Because, well, I mean, I can't remember what page it's on, but I specifically taught, remember this document talking about the garage being used.
The preservation uses, as defined elsewhere in the document, encompass public and private meetings, gatherings and celebrations, classes and education, photography, painting, and other artistic endeavors. So that, there are a lot of things that fall under preservation uses that are acceptable.
So I don't want, I mean, we, we have been fighting against, in my opinion, fake limitations on this property for so long. I do not want to impose, artificially impose our own, it has enough limitations on it. We don't need to create more.
Well, I'd say, though, that I don't think that they're fake limitations, though, Katie.
Well, at some point, they are. There are some legitimate ones, but that's, I don't want to, I guess what, I don't want to create new ones. If the conservation easement allows us to have programming there, then we should allow, be allowed to do programming there, and one would hope that as the city, we would make wise decisions around what we, what programming we think should happen there and what we should.
I agree, but again, bear in mind, we know, we know one aspect, well, if you take it all the way to litigation, nothing's ever been litigated, we don't know what it is. We do know, one thing that the city tried to do at one point in time was rejected by, by the, by the grantee of the conservation easement as not limiting. So we know, taking away litigation, at some point in time, you're operating within the concepts of, you know, there are two parties to this, and what do we think is a reasonable interpretation? And I agree, we should decide that and have as maximum flexibility as we can, but at the same time, we should be doing a good faith effort to try to comply with the conservation easement.
Absolutely, I absolutely agree, and I, that's exactly it. But we need to, we need to understand what we think that limited, what a reasonable interpretation of limited is and allow ourselves the maximum flexibility within that. And my interpretation over the however long is that programming is allowed. Now, there might be some frequency that's too much, but yeah.
We, we've just said in our vision that programming is the number one thing, right? So to me, to have, we'll just, we, we can trust that we'll make the right decision around that. To me, the, the point of this whole thing is to get to the private events and what are we going to do about that? Let's, we can figure out the programming, we don't need limitations, I think, on, on that. That, that can be decided by the land preserve and by the city. We do need to discuss how we feel about private events. So I would suggest that we move to that.
Okay, that we move to private events?
Yeah, I, I agree, but just let me add to that, because I was going to say something very similar, Doug. But I, I do think that there are parameters that should apply to programming, like you don't want the size of it to be such that we, again, get to parking or overwhelming the field on the West Side. So it can be covered by, I think, the event piece. But, but I, and I agree with you, Mayor, we ought to be able to use it to the extent the easement lets us. I would say also in line with our master plan, if it's more restrictive. But that aside, there, there, we do need to have parameters, I think.
Yes.
And that's what we're going to talk about with events.
All right, so let's talk about, let's talk about.
Maybe we start with weddings, because that's the easy one, right? So what do we do, here, you've said that there's no weddings. That weddings are not permitted.
No, they are permitted.
Why would we not allow them?
Our recommendation is that weddings not be permitted on the site.
And why is that?
Um, we do not have the capacity to accommodate them at this point.
In what sense? I mean, if you have the capacity to accommodate some private events but not weddings, what's the difference between?
Typically, there's a certain expectation of staff support for weddings that we, with the current staff that we have, aren't able to offer.
People bring in their own staff for the wedding, right? I mean, you have a caterer and.
And it becomes more closed, they need a more closed area. I, I managed the Evergreen Lake House for 10 years, public facility. We started renting it out for weddings, and there was not a weekend where the public could actually go into the facility by the third or fourth year, and it became a big problem because there is that expectation that I've rented this, so nobody else can, you know, come near the building or, or whatever it is. And it, it becomes very, very hard to keep people out of certain areas. You may have rented the barn to them, and people want to walk around the East Side, but, you know, without staff being there, those people that have rented it are going to put someone at the gate and say, nope, this is private party, it's closed. So it becomes very overwhelming. It's not, it's not like a private meeting or, or anything like that. It, it becomes such a big event with caterers and DJs and, and everything else that it's, it's really not feasible unless you're going to say, okay, you can rent the whole East Side. Then, and we close it to the public, it becomes a feasible.
And I don't think it's consistent with the, what we've just talked about, the heritage and the open space and the, and the.
But I think weddings are specifically mentioned in the conservation.
I, I think weddings is a bad idea to allow weddings.
I, I think weddings is a bad idea to allow weddings at Quincy Farm.
So I, this is where we get to the how are we gonna pay for it part. And I agree that weddings are not educational, they're not historic, et cetera. But it is a way for the, and it is allowed in the conservation easement for the property to generate revenue. Among other things that has never been brought up again, for example, is that the, the main house can be used as office space. And we haven't talked about any of that either. But this is where I start to, to struggle with, and I know it's, it's the chicken and the egg, but to have these wonderful, beautiful facilities that taxpayers pay for, that it's gonna be a lot of money.
And do we, do we have the money, though? I mean, that's the question.
Well, we have some money, but I don't know if we have the money to.
If it's a taxpayer issue, is it only Cherry Hills residents, and can I have weddings at the facility?
Well, that's an interesting thought, Dave. That actually, very interesting thought. But I don't, is there an issue with that? From a legal standpoint?
There would be with some of our grants that we've received.
Okay.
I think the overall takeaway for this line is that we were really looking at it also in terms of whether this is consistent with the purpose and vision of the property as we see it right now.
Well, it's not a wedding venue. I mean, I think we all acknowledge that, but it's.
And to Jay's point, it, it sort of turns into a wedding venue once you allow it.
Well, it would be interesting, I mean, I, I, not that I don't believe you, it would be interesting to look at, you know, the Wash Park Boathouse, the, all those other places.
I don't know how a wedding is different than a birthday party. I guess that's what I'm not understanding. If I want to have a birthday party for fifty people, how is that different than having a wedding for fifty people?
Yeah.
I guess the question is, do, just because you allow birthday parties, doesn't mean you allow a birthday party for fifty people?
No, no, absolutely right. Okay, so a wedding for twenty people and a birthday party for twenty, it's a private event, a wedding is a private event.
Yeah, I guess that's what I see. And, and I totally agree, we don't want to have five hundred people events and tents and all of that. If somebody wants to rent it and do a, a, a small wedding for a number of people that we would permit a birthday party, I'm not sure I see the difference.
I was thinking the same thing. There might be some modifiers here, like the term small, but what, also, what about the term infrequent? That, that's the direction, so that it can't become a wedding venue or a birthday. And that, it may result in a lottery system or some fairness piece, but small and infrequent. So, so, and just, just to, I, I mean, just to get more basic, you know, more simple terms, I think from, from our perspective, the weddings, and especially given some of our history and working with weddings, they just tend to have more negative external impacts than other events, sometimes of the same size. I think for us, they represented a different category of use than just a gathering of X number of people. The DJs, the hours, the traffic impacts, the noise impacts, generally, for us, put weddings in a different category of a similar size than some of the other generic private events or et cetera.
It seems to me it ought to be focused more on, okay, if we don't want disc jockeys, we don't want bands. Again, I'm thinking for somebody's fiftieth birthday party, you might have those things too. So i- if it's really more a question of controlling what are permissible types of events that you can have, I would, I would rather see it structured around, can't have a live band, or you, you know, obviously.
Music has to end at nine P M. or whatever.
You know, to me, yeah, it, it makes more sense to categorize it that way.
And the frequency issue.
Doesn't this, though, I mean, this is the thing that, and, and I recognize, we're trying to be as expansive as we can, but, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna limit it to one or two times, you know, whatever, we're gonna, no bands, or no alcohol, or this, or that.
Or just to take all the fun out of it.
Whatever it is, well, sorry. And then, and then the other thing, sitting right on top of it, which is the parking, and you're driving towards a situation where you go, hey, you, you can never say never, there'll probably be somebody, but we're basically trying to get ourselves into a situation that's gonna be rare and in between. So then, why are we doing it? Why are we doing?
Because people in this community want, look at the number of times Buell Mansion is used for community events. But people in this community want a community space. They want it, where they can have a birthday party, where they can have their kids, you know, come do pony rides for a birthday, they, they want it.
Yeah, that they want, but I'm telling you, I don't think my neighborhood wants weddings.
Well, and I understand that you're, there are some neighborhoods that would not want it, but I think, unfortunately, the vast majority of the community would love to have that as, have access to that facility to do those types of.
Well, and that's interesting, I mean, and, and I don't mean to prolong this, but I mean, so, do we have people, I mean, do we have weddings in Need Park? Do they put up a tent and we have a wedding there?
My next door neighbor's kid got married in Dahlia Hollow, they didn't put a tent up, but, because we didn't allow it, but they still had it there anyway.
Did they?
Well, you can. Yeah, so we do know that folks will, we had a couple that could walk from their house to Three Pond, had the ceremony at Three Pond with like maybe fifteen people, walked back to the house to eat and celebrate and everything else. It was just really the backdrop. So we do definitely have that happen in our parks. We have not, to date, have someone like reserve the pavilion, for example.
For a wedding, but you have had it for parties.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, it's booked every weekend in June right now.
And you could do a wedding at a water.
Yeah, there's nothing saying that you couldn't, you can't have alcohol, and you can't have very loud music, so.
Because, and the other thing, Mayor, that I wanted to come back to, you said we could have offices at the main residence. The main residence can only be used as a caretaker's residence or as a nature center. And so to the extent that there were offices tied in, and you know, and again, to be as expansive as we can, but, you know, we couldn't just rent it out to.
No, I think you can rent it out to conservation oriented organizations.
I think you can.
Because we looked at that when I was, when I was on the land preserve.
Well, well, let's, but I don't think we're talking about Hopkins House. I think what we're really doing.
No, that was the main house.
Yeah, we're talking about the, let's call this what it really is, is the main house.
Yeah, no, that's exactly what I was talking about.
The main residence and the detached garage may be maintained, well, wait a minute, can, can only be used as a caretaker's residence for a caretaker of the property, or as a nature center interpretive facility. That's pretty clear.
Now, if there's something else in there, I'll, I'll look at it. And maybe it's in a different section.
Yeah.
No, now, now, bear in, bear in mind, we can, we can demolish, we can demolish the Anderson House and put up another structure on a same footprint that can be utilized for many things that we want to use.
Ms. Chris Minn, do you have some light to shed on that?
Uh, zoning, O two zoning specifically permits offices. When we created the O two zoning, we were anticipating that it could involve other properties other than just Quincy Farm. And thus, we put, at what point in time, we were looking at the Abrams House. And thus, in the O two zoning, we made it broader than what the conservation easement permitted. It, it is not constrained by the conservation easement. It is actually broader than that, but not crazy, if that, if that helps. What?
It doesn't overrule the conservation.
No, but I remember on this.
Can I suggest we get back to the matrix? Because that's, we're really not, that issue isn't what we're talking about tonight, and it's already quarter after eight.
Okay.
It is a preservation, preservation uses. Structures can be used.
Preservation uses are allowed on the west side, right? Ellen? Sorry. And, you know, the property and the structures permitted there are maybe used as a nature preserve or historic preservation interpretation, or gardens for private and public meetings, and that must be what you're recalling. Gatherings and celebrations, classes and education, photography, painting, and other artistic endeavors, and such other uses as help to preserve the property and still an appreciation and respect for the natural and human history of the vicinity.
Yeah, and that's fine, maybe we can talk later, but, because basically, then, what you're representing is, is that, that overrides that specific provision with regard to the specific provision about the, the Anderson House.
Uh, I'm not making that representation, it's a matter of interpretation, just like this entire.
Yeah, it's a conflicting provision in there, but yeah.
I'm fully aware.
So, yeah, okay. So back to the private events. I tend to agree that a private event, a wedding is a private event, and I don't see much distinction. Yep. Great. I agree with you, Mayor. I would remind all of us that many of us have called venues, whether it's a birthday party, a board meeting, a wedding, the first question is, how many people do you accommodate? Right? And, you know, what are your dates? You know, is this date available? What times can you, you know, when you call, when you look for wedding venues in particular, there are many that say you have to end at this time, so it is doable. And you would add into the cost, the cost of a private, you know, security company. I think we could make it, I, I think we could structure it. I, I really worry about weddings, I will say that, I should, probably should have said that in the beginning. But I think that there could be a private event that is a wedding that maybe we would. And I think that instead of TBD on the west side, that we could allow it. Because of the potential for the income offsetting some of these expenses, and because, I agree with you, that our community wants this, I think that there are people who would do this. And I think we structure it, which is not what we're talking about tonight, but we can talk about, you know, you have to bring, you have to rent every, there are lots of wedding venues and birthday party venues where you have to rent everything, you have to bring absolutely everything in. And there are places where brides don't like the things they provide, and so they still bring everything in. But, you know, I think there's a way to structure it.
I, I think in terms of the west side, those have to be conservation oriented, don't they? So like a wedding wouldn't apply to that, but a board meeting of the Audubon Society would apply to that.
Well, there was debate about that, too. And that, that primarily came from the former mayor.
Um, again, the preservation uses that apply to the west side are where it lists public and private gatherings and meetings and photography and.
I just want to make sure on the west side that we're, we're.
The uses do have to, sorry, it lists the speci-, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause, actually, because I'm trying to summarize the legal document, and that's never a good look. So I would just encourage you, I'm sorry, I don't have it available to show on the screen.
Yeah, preservation uses.
It lists specific uses that include public and private gatherings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and such other uses as to help preserve the property, but there are specific uses listed there that are not necessarily.
Yeah, the, the preservation uses include uses, to the extent such uses, and still an appreciation and respect for the natural and human history of the vicinity. So to me, that.
We would say there are no weddings over there.
But that's, that's just the visioning document, right? That's.
No, that's out of.
Oh, that's.
I mean, we can ask, I mean, we have a city attorney right there. Can we have a wedding on the west side?
I'm so prepared to answer specific questions.
Yeah.
So, there's, it's, it's very complicated, there's conflicting provisions, there's things that reference, you know, subject to the limitations of this, but that limitation doesn't reference the one Counselor Holland just read off.
Yeah.
It, it takes a much deeper dive to get down to these specifics, and I think what staff is trying to say is, we can get into the weeds on this, but there's a lot of other considerations, too, right?
Well, I think the first thing that I'd like to try to get consensus on from the council is, I, I don't see how you can separate a wedding from a private event. I mean, they're identical, really. People could do anything at a private event that they do at a wedding and vice versa. So I don't think that it, it serves to break them out separately. If there are restrictions in the easement around, that private events have to be focused to some specific topic, which was the topic of discussion a while back, and I, I'd have to find the exact language, but it hinged upon the placement of a comma, that's what I remember the most about it.
But that's unfortunate.
Well, it, you know, yes, I mean, it, it is, but so that would need, but anyway, those are all rules that would be put around, to Counselor Fisher's point, those would be parameters, yes, we can have. So the question is, do we allow private events at all? Do we allow them on the east side? I feel like green eggs and ham, do we allow them on the west side? Do we allow them in the Hopkins House? Do we allow them?
Well, but I, I will go ahead and then maybe try and make this clarification. I think what we're talking about for private events is festivities, whether it be a wedding, a funeral.
Private gatherings, yeah, private gatherings.
Anything, some funerals, I guess, can be festive, but.
Birthday parties, partying.
Or is it in the meeting category? A board meeting, a, you know, an Audubon lecture.
Well, that would be a program, a lecture would be a program.
But it's a private, it's a private. So I guess I put that into, you know, sort of the, the private, non, so festive, non-festive. Festive, I mean, non-festive can be educational, it could, could be conservation, or it could just mean IBM wants to have its quarterly meeting there. But it doesn't generate the caterers, the security, the noise, the liquor, the, hopefully, parking, but.
Yeah. It sounds like really good ones. I, for one, would ban weddings. I think there is a difference, it's the staff recommendation, and I would severely limit, put parameters on events that will help ameliorate the concern that weddings are different than birthdays and others and funerals and the like. And I would have the, a strict interpretation for the west side, even if there is grayness, what do we want for the west side? And from my perspective, limiting it to conservation and the more passive uses on the west side is the way to go. So those are the way, the three answers I would give.
And I concur.
No weddings.
With you, David.
Limit events, and the west side is for conservation and the like.
And I can tell you, I have a daughter who's getting married, and it's two years out at most places to get a, a venue. It's gonna be packed. Okay, we're.
Well, but we could put parameters around that, but yeah.
It's not gonna be taken all the time, right? And it will turn into a wedding venue unless we put parameters around it. And the neighbors could have some real issues with the music and late at night and all that kind of stuff, right? I mean, we'll, we'll hear from them, right?
No question, right.
Well, except we don't allow that here. We have an amphitheater property right here, we don't allow that. We have, you know, rental here, we don't allow that. We have, we haven't had a problem that I know of, but, you know, there's a house, I mean, it's like a stone's throw from the, the grassy, sloped, grassy area with the concrete path. So I, I, fair opinion, I don't, I don't.
I suppose we can't make a rule that the neighbor is invited to every event, so.
Could I say one thing, Katie?
Yeah.
I, I am the only one here who's put on multiple events.
Yeah.
And I do think weddings are different, because there are just more components than a simple party where you bring some food. I've been in a situation where I had to call, weddings are on weekends, weekends, city doesn't work weekends, so that's just a staffing issue. But there is no turnaround in the east, and, and when it gets muddy, it was a shit show, and I had to call Jeff to, and a tow truck for the event wrecks, it was, I was shaking.
Does this mean we can't have the barn party?
No, but, but I'm giving an example, though, of just one event, to, to think about that.
But I appreciate that, but to your point, Ellen, the barn party has a band, it has catering, it had, how's that different from weddings?
No, I, it, it was really challenging, I'm just saying, to have a lot of those and not have them run by someone who's connected, you know?
Well, and that's, to Counselor Fisher's point, there obviously would have to be parameters. And I think, you know, to, the reality is that when you really put parameters around it, it could be. it could be so onerous that it isn't that popular. Nobody wants to have a wedding that the music shuts down at nine. Nobody wants to have a wedding where you have to pay an extra $10,000 for a staff person, or, right? And these are not.
Caution, I, I just think it needs to happen slowly. Seventeen Mile House has a statement saying currently, we don't offer private events. They've been thinking about this.
I understand slowly, we're talking about vision, though, and here's my concern. If this property cannot help contribute to its own success, then I am going to have a very big problem dedicating the money to make any of this happen.
Taking any of what happened?
Any of the programming that we've talked about in our guiding principles, that we're paying for that, that we're, you know, the Cherry, the city of Cherry Hills Village is not a, a school. We have not here to for invest, paid, you know, invested private taxpayer dollars to fund educational programming for the public.
I agree with you, but this isn't, and I'm not proposing this, but I'm saying, at the end of the day, if an organization such as the Land Preserve was doing the programming on its own basis, raising, that doesn't cause the city anything, and we didn't do anything else other than just the kind of things that we did and allow people to walk around it, it doesn't cost the city anything other than the maintenance that it does like for John Mead Park or anything else. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's what. Well, well, wait a minute, I mean, what are you saying?
Are you saying?
Are you saying that we're done, we're done acquiring open space?
No, no, I, maybe I misunderstood you, I thought you said the farm, it wasn't gonna cost a lot of money.
No, no, I said the farm, if all it was, was just, we weren't gonna, we're not doing any of these things. It's just, it's, it's, go walk around, that's all you're doing, that's it. I'm not proposing that, I'm saying that the city could make that decision, and if the Land Preserve was doing the programming, or it doesn't cost us anything more than it does.
That's exactly my point earlier, is that we have this whole vision document about, we're gonna do this, or we're gonna have programming, and we're gonna have the, and we're gonna, and.
I agree.
All of that, I, I love that vision, but I will have a very hard time paying for that vision 100% on the backs of Cherry Hills Village taxpayers.
Right.
And that is what.
And the thing is, is, and again, and in this, I mean, I said we probably get into this, let's face it, it is, at the end of the day, that Anderson House, that's it. I agree with you 100%. And, and you know, and again, and we don't, people will say, hey, I don't have a costing, no, you don't need it. It's Kentucky windage. It costs $800,000 for that barn. That is a three or four million dollar restoration project, I agree with you 100%. Why would we ever spend that kind of money that didn't generate revenue, et cetera, at the end of the day? Why would you ever do that? You wouldn't. And so therefore, it goes away, it's a natural space, that doesn't cost any money, you've got stuff going on at the end of the day, whether or not we have weddings or we don't have weddings, that doesn't, I mean, there's nothing else going on?
Or, it does make revenue, it does contribute to its own success. You keep all of those things, you preserve the heritage of the site and the use of the site. That's the other option.
I agree, and I still think then, it comes down to those kinds of things that would generate lots of revenue, and I think it is possible. I think parking, at the end of the day, and you're right, I mean, people would be busing them in from the churches, but I'm like, how many of those and what kind of revenue could you generate with all of those kinds of restrictions on it at the end of the day? Why, why would anyone want to do that?
Well, that's a really good question, and that comes, that goes to the whole business model.
Well, there's also the quality of life in Cherry Hills Village, and I think, you know, I don't think any of us moved here to have an event center in the middle of the city. I, I just don't believe that.
No, and I don't think anybody's talking about it being an event center. I think there would have to be parameters around, your point, frequency, that it couldn't be, you know, more, and size, and.
So, so I have, I have just a suggestion, because I do think, this is a great conversation. I also think it's so great that we could keep having it in different formations all night. Why don't we table, just for the moment, the weddings versus private events discussion? Why don't we just spend a little time on just sizing? Let's talk about what we feel, or what we think the right sized private events would look like on the east side, and what the right sized private events, that's both what time of day, what part of the week, how many people, do they need to bring in porta potties? Well, no, I think that's inherent in some of what we were getting at here, right? And so I, I guess it might be a good way, once we all have a joint understanding about what we think a right sized event feels like, maybe then we can come back to weddings versus private events or anything else, because it may answer all those questions for us.
Let's, yeah, can we actually just take a 10, five, 10, five-minute recess? It's 8:31, we'll reconvene at 8:36.
But at least there is.
I mean, I just. That one surprised me.
Well, because they said, we wanted a trial, but we reserve the right to submit an application. Absolutely, you can submit it tomorrow. I think what, I think, so they've been inactive for a long time, that's why I asked you about it, what do you want to do with this? I said, because we either need a trial, or an exit, or a. And he said, well, he talks to the head of services, he said, my work's not theirs. Poor folks. It's not on our short-term horizon, so it's just a trial.
Yeah.
Your time is up, I'm not going anywhere, and it's not my money, so give me this, don't you mind at all?
Let's try to come back together.
Dylan, oh, yeah, there is, I mean, which is, which is what we're trying to do. My concern, my biggest concern is treating, you've got a great point. About who wants something in the middle like that, et cetera. But the west side is different than the east side. I get concerned when we start saying, you know.
All right, are we all here? I think we're all here. Are we missing staff? No, okay. All right. So we're back, and we've got it all figured out, right? So just do that, what we just said, just do that, and then, and the answers are no, for.
Yes, exactly.
Maybe.
So let me just ask a couple of questions, and again, we're not held to this, I'm just trying to get us to kind of have a shared understanding of the feel, or what the right sized feel is for events. So we, I believe the mayor earlier said that we all are in agreement that private events are allowable on both the east and west side, yes? Right?
You mean technically, or?
No, no, vision, vision.
Oh, vision-wise.
Vision, our vision is that we should allow private events on the east and west side.
I don't know.
Well, that was in the key principles that we discussed earlier, right? I'm not talking about size or anything else right now, just.
Well, no, what it said is that private events may be allowed, and it didn't really specify what it is.
May, may.
I'd, I'd sit back, you know, and again, just to kind of help to push it along, and everybody else can push back, which I think they will, I'd, I'd sit back and go, there aren't any private events on the west side. And private events are gonna be on the east side. I have all, and, and no one has fought against the grantee as hard as I have over these years. But I've always been wed to the fact of going, that west side is different than the east side. And I'm all about optionality, but it is different, it is a different area over there and needs to be treated differently. And the Hopkins House makes it difficult, and there's gonna be a rationalization, because if we're gonna spend money, we're gonna utilize that, and that'll be different, and then you can sit back and go, well, if you're gonna be doing it at the Hopkins House, how come you're not doing it on the lawn? How come you're not doing it here? Because we're not, because I'm gonna spend money to restore the Hopkins House, and if I'm spending money, I'm gonna use the facility, and I'll push that till hell won't have it. But then, the rest of it, it's an open, natural, nature area and utilized for programming, that's what we do. That's, that's what I do, pretty clear, everybody else can go and say.
I'm good with that.
I disagree, I disagree.
Wait, keep going, we're on a wall, just to see where I.
I disagree. Ooh, Rob, it comes down to Rob.
I did.
Yeah, yeah. Private events, low impact, does not close access to the entire site on the west side.
We didn't say closed access to no events.
I think you have to allow some private events on the west side, they can be small. But again, that goes, I hate to make this circle back, but what this circles back again is, do you want this property to be where it's, on the west side, just city programming? And we have the money to do that, we don't need to quote revenue stores. If you, if you dress up the west side to the point that you can have some of these fancy things, and that requires you, let's hypothetically say, to spend $5 million, then you probably want that, because that $5 million is to support programming, then those programming should pay. That's one side. You say, okay, or the other side, you say, we'll spend $5 million for programming, and we just don't need to re-cover that, but that's a decision, again, on that merit that we talked about earlier. I am in the camp that if you just want to keep this as a space for public functions, either through the village or our partner, the Land Preserve, then you only spend a certain amount of money on the west side, and we bought it, we, we accepted it knowing that those expenditures would be needed. You don't have to spend all that much more, I mean, the incremental cost of programming is probably not that much, I mean, let's hypothetically, a couple hundred grand a year, maybe, I don't know, but, you know, that, to me, is not a lot of money comparatively. And then you turn around and you just say, look, nothing goes on, I mean, I, I'm okay with board meetings, but I don't look at them as having to be the ones that pay for a lot of improvements. I think, you know, you can rent a space here in Mead Park for 40 bucks. I think, you know, everything is undervalued in the use. A board meeting could go there for the same 40 bucks, you know? That's the way it's okay with me, but, you know, if you have to make massive improvements, and, and someone could say, look, I can still have a wedding without a massive improvement, are we still gonna allow weddings? I mean, a birthday party, I, I mean, my, my, my gut reaction in the vision statement is different than my initial. We need to generate goodwill on this property right now, and get it used and active. And therefore, for the immediate visioning, the short-term vision is, there will be no private events there. We need to get it up and running and get people loving it and enjoying it, and then the vision is, we will evaluate whether we can incrementally add something.
So I think I just heard you say two different things, though, yeah, I thought you said at first that you were okay with.
I'm okay with a board meeting, but if my preference is, right now you say, no private functions, and we're gonna add them, we're gonna.
At all, or just on the west side?
West side.
Okay. So the, this conversation, when it came up before. So the, um, this conversation, when it came up before, came up because of the desire for the land preserve to host a tea on the lawn of the main house. That would not be allowed.
What kind of tea is it?
Well, okay.
No, no, I, I don't mean it like that.
This is.
It's a city, it's a city sponsored event.
No, it's not. The land preserve is a private organization.
No, is this a, a function that people in the public can sign up for?
This, this is not a real example that we're aware of.
This was when this conversation around
Earl Gray, yeah.
Holding events on the west side of the farm came up before, and this is where the opinion that events had to be related to conservation uses, and I remember it very vividly. Um, and it was, the discussion was around using the lawn for a tea.
Is that the same as a pasture?
Uh, no, it's the lawn on the, it's like the, the bluegrass area where the sculpture is. Yeah.
Just. And we're, we're defining an event as something where somebody.
This event never happened, because we were told we couldn't do it, but yeah.
But I mean, again, we're talking about, you know, because in other words. It's a private event, but event is, they've gone to the city and said, we're going to do this, and then there's, I guess, as opposed to a people going over there, well, with their thermoses and sitting on the lawn.
No, this, this is an event where an organization would pay, would, would have, sell tickets.
Yep, yep.
To a tea.
Right.
To come and raise money for their organization, this was.
And based on what Rob is saying, right now.
That would not be allowed.
Exactly. It's not allowed, for the time being. That doesn't mean that you couldn't come back, you know, once this thing's up and running in five years.
Well, I don't think we want to be changing our vision every five.
Well, the vision, no, 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 the vision accommodates both of those.
Okay.
The vision statement right now accommodates both of those, and as we drill down, truth keys, and then this, and then the matrix, etcetera, although it depends, and then our rules, that's going to, and then the, the objectives, when we get to that, not tonight, um, it's going to get more specific, but the vision, what's been written right now.
Can we flip back to that, please?
Sure.
And, and if I could just clarify one thing, for the, for the council folks who, uh, want to, for the time being, not allow events on the west side, heart stop, we are not talking about programming, though, is that correct? That's different.
Talking about programming.
Just private events.
That's right.
Not the Hopkins House either.
And not the Hopkins House either.
Right, so, so exactly, so it, it could be someone who says, I want to have for my family a private bird watching event on the west side, and if it were being hosted by the city, that would be permitted. But for me to say, I'd like to, um, rent the west side, not exclusively, but to host a, have a private birder come and walk us around, we wouldn't be allowed to do that.
I don't even think you'd be required to rent it in that case, you would just show up.
If I wanted to rent it, if I wanted to rent it, or I want for a private event, that programming would otherwise be, be permitted if it were programming, but not if I want.
I want my Girl Scout troop. To go over there and organize a bird watching event for my Girl Scout troop. Well, that is a private event. I mean, this is.
A private event.
This is the nature of the discussion, and that this is why it is so hard.
Right.
This is why it's so hard. The other part that it's hard is, you're saying no to weddings, the barn party. How many people attended the barn party? Yes, please do, because I do not want to make it so that we cannot have the barn party.
I can, I can also talk about weddings, so just hope you have a lot of time. Um, not only have I had several children married, uh, I have one coming up in September. I was also president of the village club, so I can talk about weddings, and what happens to a property, and how many people you need to have there to make sure nothing bad happens, because bad things happen. Um, so, that's a wedding. You have no control over these people, they come from all over, they have certain expectations, and you don't have a lot of control over that. The village club now requires you to hire several of their people to be there at the same time. And you must be a member, etcetera. Now let's talk about the. C N P fundraising party. There are how many volunteers at this party, working? Twenty-five of all volunteers are working that party. Twenty-five. You can't afford to pay twenty-five people to work a party. So they are making, and these are all people who really care about the property. In addition, almost everyone, with a couple exceptions, maybe five, are Cherry Hills residents. They also care about the property.
But that's my point, Laura, is that we don't want to make, we can't say you can only have a private event here if you have Cherry Hills Village resident volunteers. If we say.
No, but I'm saying.
You know, private events for twenty people, that means no barn party.
No, it does not.
Barn party's on the east side.
Yeah, we.
But I.
And we sponsor.
Talking about trying to exclude it all.
I'm talking about private events and talking about parameters around private events.
Okay, well.
East side, west side.
But it's, it's also sponsored by the city.
This is to raise money for programming.
Well, sort of.
For the city.
Because some of the money, not exactly, because not all of the money raised by the barn party goes directly to city programming.
No, it goes to the barn.
Well, no, but it also goes to fund, it goes to fund the land preserve, who then in turn provides a lot of programming, but it is a fundraising event.
But that's all we do, Katie.
Well, I know, but I'm sorry, it's.
I'm sorry, that's all we do.
I do, and I understand that, but it is still a private event. And then, and we can't differentiate.
Yes, you can. You absolutely can.
We can't differentiate the Cherry Hills Land Preserve from the Cherry Hills Village Police Foundation.
Well, why can't you?
If the purpose is.
I'm talking about parameters around private events.
Yes, you can.
Just parameters around private events.
On the farm totally.
Yes.
There's either no private events, or there's private events on the.
On the east side. I, I thought we were just saying we didn't want parties that were a hundred and fifty people.
Right. Where, you know, Chris's question was, talk about numbers, talk about size, talk about all of these different things. My concern is that when we put size parameters, we are going to exclude the barn party.
But, but can't you put size parameter, and other parameters on, but say there's an exception when it is for fundraising for the very facility that's involved?
All right. I, I would also point out that we can distinguish between the Cherry Hills Land Preserve and the Cherry Hills Police Foundation, for, for example, because we have an M O U with the land preserve to program and fundraise for Quincy Farm.
Okay, as long as that remains in place?
Yes. Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Um, as long as that remains in place.
I don't.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, if that's not in place. Yeah. What's a good number?
How many people attend the barn party?
Uh, well, excluding volunteers?
No, just how many people total are on the property?
Two hundred?
Yeah.
One eighty?
Earth Day?
But that's a program.
That's a program, yeah, but.
Yeah, you're right, that's a program, sorry.
And it's over several hours. Some people come and go for.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, two hundred, I mean, if you guys want to limit it, it limits the fundraising for programming, but, you know, and it also, but it's, I, I think we have the parameters, we can work on it, you can decide what you want, because it is not just fundraising. Um, it really is a lovely community event. And if you want to say, we're not going to let some of you come, um.
I.
I don't know. That's okay with me, but.
I, that is not okay with me, actually, and so that's why, that is my concern, as we talk about private events, we need to remember that there are private events that we do support, that we do want to encourage, that we do want to have happen, and not shoot ourselves in the foot.
Really, right now, and it's, it's, it's a good discussion, but the exception right now is the barn party.
And that's it.
That's it. And by the way, the city can do whatever the hell it wants to do with these properties.
Right.
We don't need to have the same rules applied to the public that we do with regard to the city. We can invite the entire city of Cherry Hills Village with the rules I, I, that Rob and I, and, and we all suggested, and that's okay. We can do that. The city can do that.
Well, that's not a private event either.
Right, it's a, that's exactly, it's a city event, and it's not programming, it's, it's, so the city can do what it wants, programming is programming, and so what, we're only talking, that the problem here is the barn party.
Well, for now, until you get, you'll get requests from, there are so many people who do fundraisers in this community that it's not weddings, it's there, you're going to get requests to, to host fundraising parties every weekend.
Well, no, but then, but anyway. And I think she's right on the money, I mean, leave, leave it, but I mean, hey, they're a contractor to the city for the purposes of enhancing and supporting Quincy Farms. That is the difference. I mean, that's there, and if there was no, they, they wouldn't be doing it, so it wouldn't exist.
Right.
I mean, that's a huge point.
That's it.
So I, I'm just going to throw this out there as a straw man to discuss, but I think a hundred persons on the east side is a sensible, uh, number. Let's, for discussion.
Discuss.
Yes.
To clarify.
Hundred people, discuss, are you?
For a private event associated with.
You're not associated with the land preserve or the city. Not associated with the land preserve or the, or the city. That's, to me, that's maybe the max that you'd want.
Well, it depends on the day of the week, it depends on the time of the day. I mean, uh, at, at nine o'clock to eleven o'clock, sure. You weren't at night, you don't want many people there at all, but if it's ten o'clock till two o'clock on a Saturday, I don't know.
Uh, where are you going to park them?
Make a rule that if above a certain number, they all have to be bused in.
They have to be bused in.
You can temporarily allow parking along Quincy.
There's also the, if they work out an arrangement with Kent for folks to walk from Kent.
Uh, sorry, the, the rest of the team strongly, strongly recommends against.
Kent.
Encouraging private events to approach Kent for parking.
Okay.
All I'm saying is, you can work those things out, those details out, that goes into the limitation of the rules that Earl talked about that makes it where it's not very desirable to use, but I understand we're talking about the east side, where we kind of do want to encourage things to get used. But I think the size of the event really matters. What kind of event is it? Is it a loud event, or is it a, you know, sign language event? I mean, I, I'm sorry, but that's probably not appropriate, but.
You know, the restrictions on music at times and other things, and we're probably not going to figure that all out here. But, uh, is that generally? I mean, we don't want really huge events, but we want to encourage private events on the east side, I think.
What does staff think about a hundred people?
Yeah, I don't, I honestly don't, I, I. In my opinion, based on other events that we have in other places, I don't think, I would hesitate to give you a number right now, because, yes, to your point, we don't have a capacity for the barn yet offhand, so that would really inform my recommendation. And I do think that things like amplified sound and lighting at night, and, and those have more of an impact to me than the strict number of people.
Doug, does a hundred include weddings? Because again, I, I.
Uh, no, I'm not for weddings.
But, but I do think, I think that, that's point is well made. Amplified music is often a limiting, uh, variable that, uh, some facilities will have. What's that? No liquor, yeah, um, that could be an opportunity, I.
Well, that would whittle down the number of parties.
That would, that would absolutely, if we wanted to artificially whittle that down, that would go a long way. I, amplified music is a good one, I, I guess I would say, maybe in an effort to keep the conversation rolling. I don't know. We, we tried limited, but that means different things in different contexts. I think what we're just trying to find out, are, are we looking for the east side to have small, infrequent, not at night kind of events, medium, more frequent, and possibly at night sometimes, or larger, more frequent in weekends and nights?
I think as long as we structure it so that, um, based on the size of your event, you have to pay more money so that you, we can hire staff, whether it's our staff or external staff. I, I'm not sure that there's a huge difference between allowing an event, other than we would make a little bit more money, fifty versus a hundred, versus a hundred and fifty, to be honest, right? I mean, so as long as we structure it the right way, and we don't let there be amplified music, and we don't let it be past a certain ti- time of night, and maybe we only allow it on Saturdays. I'm picking a day, you know, we don't necessarily have to do it every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Chris, I'm still on the same page, small, infrequent, when the sun is shining, let Emily figure out what small means, and no weddings, so.
That's what I think is, is that, you know, and again, we can keep going and talking, because it's, I know staff, I mean, you like getting this input. But to me, I'm sitting back and going, man, if we were literally just going, hey, no private events on the west side, and private events up to a hundred on the east side, we don't need to talk to them, that, I never thought we'd get there, ever, not tonight. And if we got there, it's like going, good, let's, let staff come back now and take that and work with it, and come back with the details about the, the next level down, whether there's liquor or not liquor, whether it's amplified or not amplified, whether it's this or that. That's, that's huge if sta-, if council was willing to just do that.
But if this isn't part of the visioning, then what is it part of?
Well, again, I think this is all good information for us for, in the, if you read the narrative for the east and west side, it does talk about activity, there are some activities already listed in there, right? We would need to go back and update that to reflect this conversation. Furthermore, then, when we went on to goals and objectives, I think there's absolutely an opportunity to get more specific.
Well, that's where I have, so this is where I have an issue, is that if we're talking about the vision for the property, then setting these things and saying, we'll reevaluate in five years, that's not a vision. Um, that, that's a implementation, that's a goal and a strategy, and a, that's not the vision. So I, I don't know that what I've heard is, is the vision that there will be no events on the west side ever. That's not what I heard.
Private events.
Private events, sorry.
Well, again, I mean, the only thing you'd need to do, as I can tell, if, if that was the case, is, is that last bullet. Private events, uh, may be permitted on the east side in a way that is consistent. That's it, the, the rest of the vision still works.
Well, not if you go change this narrative of the east and west side, which is what Chris was saying.
Well, you're not changing.
But I thought we were saying that private events could be held at the Hopkins House, and we haven't addressed, and we haven't addressed the, the main house, right?
Yeah.
We're really talking about outside private events.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So I think, I think the key principles can be modified, as we've talked about them, and, and we aren't going to come to a decision tonight on what types of private events, when and where and how. But we can, we can walk away from the vision. And, and, and then we, we step down to now, what does that mean?
Right, but if, but not if it means revising the narrative of the vision. If it means revising the narrative of the vision, then I'm not comfortable with that. To start including, you know, no events on the west side and.
No, that's not part of the vision.
Well, that, I, that's what I thought I heard Chris say, was that we would need to revise these.
So I'm just trying to, you know, I'm trying to.
I'm trying to go through the west side and look at some of these activities that we talked about in here, so, I'm just trying to.
We do talk about the pond.
Ellen, didn't there, didn't you tell me about a teacher who did a star astronomy thing over on the west side?
Was, the land preserve did that.
Oh, the land preserve did it? Oh, okay, I thought that was a teacher.
That's a problem if we don't allow private events on the west side. Point it out.
I don't know.
There's nothing. The only thing that needs to be changed is that last bullet of the key, of the key, uh, key principles, the rest, the rest of the vision, certainly the vision statement is fine, and then the key principles, that just needs to have really a couple of words added, and the east and the west side narratives are fine.
So the, yeah, the east side narrative has a lot more of the specifics about gathering places, how the facilities be used to support those, uh, barnyard activities. You're right, the west side has less of those specifics, and it's more, just emphasizing the passive aspect of it.
So, you're gonna make those changes and bring it back to us?
Yes, but I, as I see it, there may not be a ton of changes to be consistent with what we're talking about here. If, I mean, I guess a question for council is if the desire is to, wow.
I think you should make the changes that we've discussed tonight and bring it back and then we make sure everybody's comfortable with it. I know you don't like that idea.
I don't, I just, I'm not comfortable with making changes to the vision. I don't, I, I haven't heard consensus that we've agreed to change the vision. And in particular, you know, I guess, one other thing we haven't discussed is the maintain public access to the site piece. All we, all we agreed to before we moved on to the grid was that private events may be permitted kind of dot, in a way that is sort of to be determined, right?
We talked about eliminating the second bullet point.
Yeah, we did, oh, I'm sorry, those changes, yes, okay, okay.
Oh, right, yes, I would agree with that.
Sorry, I thought, yeah, I was stuck on this.
So, I mean, so say Katie, what, what, I mean, what's, what's your issue?
Well, we didn't discuss the maintain public access to the site part. What that means to me is that, um, anybody can walk anywhere on the site that's open to the public anytime they want. The grid just communicates it in a slightly different way, which says, close.
Does not close access to the site entirely.
To the entire site.
Which means you can. Close access to portions of the site. And I think you have to do that.
Maintain public access to the site means, in my opinion, maintain public access to all of the site. So, I couldn't have a birthday party on the east side and tell somebody who showed up there to stroll around that they can't do that right now.
In our conversations about this, it was really acknowledging the fact that if you rent out a building, you rented the building, we're probably not gonna let the public then wander through the middle of your birthday party. However, you're not gonna prevent somebody from walking through the barnyard, maybe, in front of the barn.
I would want that. If I'm having my kid's birthday party there and we're doing activities in the barnyard and the cake is set up in the barn, I wanna be, I, I mean, I think it would need to be on a side by side. You're renting the east side, you're renting the west side.
Well, I, I, you know, speaking just for myself, if we were comfortable and we could get to the point where you're going, there are no private events on the west side, I'd be okay with modifying the east side and just say, hey, east side's a private event, the east side's closed.
I'll be with that.
Provided it's infrequent. Cause again, if it's seven days a week and, you know.
Right, and then that's, that's, that would be the, the next level, like, an important level. I mean, it's not like way down in the weeds, it's the next level. Which I was originally, and there's a good philosophy, a good piece for it, which is we're not closing that part, but it's like going, well, okay, if the west side was always open, basically, it would be because there would be no private events there. Then by definition, there's, it's always open even if there's a private event on the east side. Probably rationalizing here a bit, but.
Or what if there's a program on the west side and a private event on the east side?
Well, that's, the private programming doesn't close the park.
Yeah, that doesn't close the park.
Right, okay.
I mean, there, you know, Ellen's doing her thing, polywogs are jumping around or whatever they're doing and, you know, people are walking.
Yeah, but people have paid to do that, right?
That doesn't mean you come up and do the program, I mean, it just means you can still walk on the nature trail.
Right, okay.
So, there's a lot of, like, almost, can, can we summarize where we're at? As in, I'm not sure if I know.
I, I think, um, while I still maintain my objection, I think that the majority are leaning towards no events, no private events on the west side at all.
Outside of the Hopkins House.
Well, and is that outside of the Hopkins House? The Hopkins House is not ready for, for private events at this point.
But when it's ready, yeah.
When it's ready.
Kent, it's not happening now.
Okay. Okay, but, so, what timeframe are we talking about here? Cause I have heard we're gonna reevaluate all of this at some point.
No, we can reevaluate. And we are gonna reevaluate. We can, in other words, to basically say, hey, it's not cast in concrete with a wrecking ball to bring it down. We could reevaluate if and when we want to.
Okay.
And that you can run out the east side for private events.
Well, but can you go back to west and just say one more time here?
Yeah, so, no private events on the west side at all, with the exception of the Hopkins House. Programming is permitted.
And family or other events or whatever.
Public events are permitted.
Yeah.
Private events on the east side.
Private events on the east side.
When, when it's complete, because we can't have events there right now.
Well, obviously, yeah.
Same with the Hopkins House.
Yeah, private events on the east side. With parameters that are still to be determined.
Yeah.
And you can close off the east side as long as there's access to the west side.
Let me ask this, uh, right now it's dawn to dusk, right? So, are we, are we changing that policy then?
No, that's the, that's the public, that's the public.
Public access.
It's private, we have a different hour.
Yeah.
It's not dawn to dusk, is it? It's dawn, it's.
No, it's dawn to dusk.
It's sunrise to sunset.
It's not, which again is another limitation.
And I think that there, I, I'm not sure where we came down with the weddings. It felt a little evenly split.
Mayors, maybe list all, have staff list, if it's okay, Chris, all the potential parameters. Um, and I don't know if we multi-vote or somehow, but figure out which ones, you know, weddings on or off, um, you know, dawn to dusk on or off, music on or off, liquor, just list all of them. Size, Doug, your point on a hundred, and, and then we can take some time, maybe there's a recommendation.
My recommendation actually would be at that level that we really need to involve PTRC.
Involve PTRC for what?
For setting rules and parameters around music, no music lights, no lights, lights during these times.
So, I, I guess I would just offer, it's technically not a park.
No, but I would also like to add that I think it's time to formally disband the Quincy Farm Committee because nothing's happening and it was supposed to formally report to council and frankly, it doesn't exist and it doesn't serve any purpose anymore.
Agreed.
So, if some of that function is gonna happen and that committee's no longer around, then we need somebody with expertise in your proposal, that it be PTRC. Is there a way that we can draft them into this legally when they aren't, you know, if it's not legally?
I think that we can.
Of a park.
I think that we can call upon them. I, I just feel like discussing hours and lights and is a little too granular for council level work.
I would agree with that.
So, um.
I totally agree with that. I would suggest that you let us take a crack at it and, and bring something back to you that's sort of, here's, here's, here, it'll have all the categories by definition, but then.
But even then, it's gonna be a, turn into a discussion, it's like.
Can we back up further, cause I'm struggling, so we're not gonna be ready for this? We're, sorry, we're not gonna be ready to be hosting these type of events within the next two years?
Yes, right, so that, for the vision, yes.
We need everything else, so I, um.
I agree, that's why I asked, this isn't in the vision, like, why, because the vision basically says we can have private events.
Yeah, so I'm a little bit hesitant to, to bring to council that level of granular information because we're, we're not really gonna be able to prepare that adequately, I think, because we're not quite gonna know what the site looks like. Um, so things like, once we put parking together, that's how much parking we're going to have. So, that's gonna limit the number of people, so things like that. So, my, um, first concern would be to get the, the vision statement nailed down so that we are ready to have that conversation once we are ready to have it.
So, can we just, just the vision statement itself, not the rest?
Yep, so I think, we've made some changes to the key principles that have been recorded.
Right.
We, the only part of the final key principle is the, um, maintain public access to the site. And maybe that just needs to be revised to say, to at least part of the site or, cause we, what we just discussed was that we're okay closing one side as long as the other side is open.
That's right, but also then the last.
Something that reflects that.
Oh, hold it, hold it, why, why wouldn't it, why wouldn't it be, like I said, private events may be permitted on the, on the east side? Why wouldn't it say that? We've said, we're not gonna have.
Because this is the vision and, yes.
And we're not gonna have private events on the west side. That's the vision.
Well, I thought we might have private events in the Hopkins House was the.
Yeah, we, yeah, we could clarify that.
And the Anderson House, which we haven't discussed, but.
No, no, we didn't, no, no, we, we, you know. Putting Hopkins House aside, and again, maybe we didn't make the progress, I thought, let's just carve the Hopkins House out for a second. When we were all talking and everybody kinda weighed in, no private events on the west side, I didn't think that meant other than the Anderson House.
Well, this is why I said, are we discussing, discussing the vision? Or are we discussing the lower level kind of parameters and, and rules? And you said, there's nothing in this document that would prevent that. Where does it say that? And I said, you're right, there's nothing that says it, so.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, no, no, what I said was, is there is nothing in the vision statement or the key principles, other than that last bullet, that, 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 that requires to be changed if we prohibited events on the west side, private events, and allowed public, uh, private events on the east side. That's why I said, if those two statements, nothing needs to be changed in the current vision and key principles other than that last bullet.
Right, but then, well, no, you didn't say other than the last bullet, you said nothing needs to be changed.
No, I didn't, I did say that, but I'm saying it now.
He's saying it now.
Okay.
And.
And that's when I said, I'm not comfortable changing the vision, because.
And, and the, the vision's not changing.
I, the key principles are part of this visioning document.
Oh, okay, you're not, you're not, no, no, say it the other way, you're not, you're not comfortable, which you already have, you've already said it. I'm against prohibiting, uh, private events on the west side. I mean, you said that.
What I've said is that I didn't hear from people here that the vision, the broad vision that should hopefully last for a very long time, I did not hear consensus from this group, maybe it exists, but I did not hear consensus from this group that that is the long-term vision for the property. What I heard was, that's how we wanna start out. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, I mean, I, I, I get where you're going, but the issue is, is just like with everything, is we always say, hey, no council can bind another council, so what are we talking about, two years? I mean, the bottom line is, is that the vision right now is, is that there are not gonna be private events. Well, I'm, I'm proposing this, I think that's what we were saying before. No private events on the west side, private events on the east side and you can reserve the entire east side if you have a private event, that's another change.
There's not gonna be private events on the property at all in the next two years. I mean, other than the barn party, so.
But that's, but again, that's, this is.
If we're only talking about two years, then we don't need to.
Well, no, I'm not, I, I said that just to kinda say, hey, I don't, I don't think we could quibble with, is it five years, is it ten years? This is what we're doing, this is what the annual plans are gonna start driving towards. This, that which we just, if we agreed to that, that which we said.
Well, and that is my concern, is that the, if we have in our vision that there are no events on the west side, then that drives, and, and that drives, uh, annual plan of tearing down the Anderson House.
Not necessarily.
Well, I think it does, and that's what I'm concerned about, because that has not been discussed and decided.
But just, just so you could say, Katie, there's a difference between, I mean, you know, the, the continuum is, pump five million dollars into it and restore it into, I'm an amazing thing to, hey, just restore the outside and have it look all right, to, hey, just keep it standing and just keep it there from falling down to tear it down.
But if the vision is that that house will never be used for private events.
I don't think you can say never.
Can, well, if, but if that's what's in the vision, if the vision says.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion?
Please do.
So, these key principles, all we're saying in this last key principle is private events may be permitted in a way that's consistent with the vision, limited impact and maintain, maybe we take out that last phrase. Some public access to site. It's, it's not saying they have to be on both sides, when they're gonna be, how they're gonna be. I think we can be okay with this because.
I am okay with that.
Staff is coming back to us with parameters and what's made, at some point, sorry. I mean, we are going to develop parameters, let me say that, at some point and half of the council has already made it clear that, um, that they aren't favoring events on the west side. Okay, well, that doesn't, that's not inconsistent with, with what's here. So, I think rather than continuing to discuss this, I think we can leave it as it is. We all understand it's two years before anything happens at a minimum and we're gonna be considering what the parameters are, how it's gonna happen in the future. So, as a vision, this probably works. Can I suggest that in here?
That was my suggestion, is that we just change maintain public access to be, maintain some public access.
Yes, I think that works. Plus the other changes that we.
Yes, plus the other changes and then, I don't think there's any change required to the more prosaic descriptions.
In the narrative.
In the narrative, right?
What were the other changes?
The other changes were, um, they were the, it was, take out the second bullet. Um, but somehow, but somehow address youth and family, right? Was it, I don't.
I mean, we were just gonna add schools to the third.
We were gonna add schools to the third one.
Okay. So, just those two.
Yeah.
And then what you said on that other one and some, some public access.
Okay. Um, is, yeah, is there a, is that the end?
Yeah, well, not of the whole presentation, but that's certainly the end of the media's part of the presentation.
Okay.
So, I'm just going to spend, look, look at that.
Do you, well, go ahead.
Well, I think.
I think you've gotten that.
I think we've got this part.
Cut.
So, I, I think this could be, I, I would recommend we have a more shortened version of this, but I still think we should cover this topic. So, and, and as a part of our background research about the vision and all the work that's gone on over the years, um, it really has led to some additional research that we provided to you in your packet. And as a part of those conversations, um, you know, there was, uh, uh, opportunity for a couple of members, for Katie, sorry, the mayor, Mayor Portem, and staff to go visit Four Mile Park, which is located in Glendale, but is a city and county of Denver facility, um, which led to interesting conversations about how that facility works. You know, how, what's their operating model, where some of their revenue come from? Who do they, you know, how do they market, what, you know, et cetera? Um, which then led to conversations about, well, that's, that's one approach. And I, by the way, I would hate for anyone to get too hung up on scales here. This isn't really a conversation about trying to achieve the same visitor numbers that Four Mile's trying to achieve or to have the minimum amount of, or the maximum amount of annual donation by the city to the nonprofit. That's, that's not really what was being discussed, it was really more a matter of how you structure it. So, there was also then some analysis done by other facilities that use different models. And that really led to some really meaningful conversations, which resulted in a letter from the land preserve to, to city council, really. I think it's exhibit E, if I'm not mistaken, in the packet.
No, E's the matrix.
F, exhibit F, is that right?
Yes.
I'm doing this off the top of my head. Um, where the land preserve has had a lot of productive internal conversations about what their requested role is with the farm moving forward. I would like to add, give them an opportunity to talk about that for just a few moments. Um, they put a lot of work, um, and a lot of good thought into that and I think, um, council would benefit from hearing from them directly about their thoughts about that, about that direction. With all that said, again, we're not asking for council to decide anything tonight. We really are just trying to get the ball started tonight, just to get, to let council know, hey, this conversation is coming. Um, you need to start thinking in these terms, you need to start really, uh, and we've already started tonight, actually, uh, when we start talking about how we fund things and et cetera. So, with that said, um. So with that said, um, Laura, I'm not sure. Are you the one presenting? Well, yes, if you would please join us.
Uh, okay. So I hope you all finished, uh, what we presented. And really.
In part, it was in a response to the MOU as well. We really started working with the city in, um, 2023, under the MOU, which calls us a partner. And now it's 2025. And we are now a very excited organization. We were a very disorganized organization before. Um, um, my personal opinion. Um, and with not a lot of idea of where we were going or how we were going to do it. And I think the city was the same. Who are these people? What are they going to do and how are they going to do it? And the MOU listed us as a partner. I don't really think they meant that legally, but it does have certain connotations. And now after two years, we at the Cherry Hills Land Preserve are so excited about what we've achieved with the city and the staff and with the village and the community. I mean, really excited. I mean, over 400 people attended our Earth Day. I think it was 68 at our first event, um, two years ago. That's quite a change. So, but what we've learned in this process is that we're really an advisor to the city. We can give advice. We have very strategic ideas. There's a lot of give and take. But the decision has always consistently been the city's, especially, um, but because of the working relationship, and I think the trust that has been developed now in that we trust, that we, the CHLP, trust the city, that the people we're working with, Emily, Jay, Chris, Hans, it's unbelievable, you guys, um, to really now have this phenomenal feel for what Quincy Farm is and can be. So as a board, we also know, uh, we've learned a lot about our volunteers. We've learned a lot about donors or lack thereof sometimes, and strange things they say to you. Um, and so we had a retreat and the upshot is the letter you have. Um, we are very focused on education and outreach and our programming, and we have found that the community is very, very excited about that as well, particularly our younger families. That does not mean that we haven't had huge response in our more senior, uh, programs. Uh, but we're, they're smaller. They tend to be smaller. And, um, and that group likes a smaller group. Um, and we have found, um, a way to bring the community together with this. We do not believe that a huge number of programs benefits the city or the community that much because we have, um, we have people who are very busy and who are gone a lot. And it just isn't a good use of anybody's time. And, uh, so, but we're still developing. What do people love? What don't they love? When's a good time to have it? Uh, how can we improve each program? And it's, it's working and our ambassadors are unbelievable. Our ambassadors include people like Mike Gallagher, um, and, but also improve a whole, uh, include a whole bunch of young, uh, members of our community with, uh, school-aged children. And they're excited. And Ellen has gotten these folks to go to the bus stop and hand out flyers about everything. That's why we had 408 people. Um, and it's, and then they talk to their friends. So it's, it's working, but remember, it's two years. So we've got a ways to go. Um, let's see. Um, we do like to give strategic advice, uh, because we do get the feedback from the community. And strategic advice doesn't necessarily, it's advice. And I, now Jay doesn't remember this, but probably, but I suggested something at one point in time, and I think his, he looked and said, no, the city can't do that. We won't do that. Okay, fine. Um, and, uh, because there are things that we might think are great and the community might think is great, but really doesn't work within the context of how the city functions. So that give and take is very friendly now. Uh, it wasn't so much at the beginning, I don't think. So, um, I'm very excited about that. I guess really one of the most important things we do and have done is through the programming is cause people to say, this is a good use of our tax money. This is something that I want my kids to do. And, and it does, I don't know if I want to give you, use the word cover, but it is cover. I mean, you're getting feedback that people want this. Now, as a 501(c)(3), we must be open to the public, and we are. We have a significant percentage of people that do come to our events, that are on our emails, and, um, they are part of the public. We are required as for some of the grants from Arapahoe County, um, and we're open to that. But it's really our community that is supporting this, and it is our community that loves it. Now, I'm just going to tell one story because Earl was over for dinner and, um, one of my grandchildren were there. And spontaneously, without grandma poking her or anything, she, we said something about Quincy Farm, and she's seven, and she said, I love Quincy Farm. And she's not alone. There's a whole bunch of kids now in Cherry Hills who love Quincy Farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, at first, before we have questions, I just want to say how much we value the land preserve and all of the work that you guys have done. It is really tremendous. The awareness that you have raised, the growth in the programming, the quality of the programming, the engagement of new faces, new people in our community, younger people, it's absolutely invaluable. And I know that it is 100% attributable to the dedication and hard work that really the two of you, but also your other board members and your ambassadors have put into it. It's, it's remarkable. So thank you. Thank you. And then thank you for that. Does anyone have questions? Your mic was on, so I was.
Well, I'll, I'll just say, I mean, and I appreciate everything you said. The one thing you didn't go into, which I think is important, it's important for the council to understand. I understand it because I've seen it. And again, and you talked about fundraising and you said, hey, you're going to continue to raise funds in order to do the programming. And you're going to annually assess capital projects to determine, you know, what the potential might be for doing something there. That's a significant change from where we were on the MOU. It's important for council to understand that. That may generate some questions. It may not. It doesn't generate any for me. I understand it, but it could for.
Happy to answer questions.
Good for others.
Any questions?
Thanks for pointing that out because you're right. It is a significant change and, but we appreciate it and appreciate the funds that you have raised and contributed so far. And anything that you are able to do in the future will also be appreciated. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as we've just, this is the last slide. Yay. Um, next steps. So really through the remainder of 2025, as Emily pointed out at the start of this conversation, there's still quite a bit of the 2025 annual work plan projects that need, that are either ongoing or, or are not yet underway. Um, we, we, and, and especially Emily and folks in Public Works really need the time to, uh, make significant progress on a lot of those projects. Um, so that, that will last throughout, but that's, that represents a significant amount of, of capacity. Additionally, then, number two here is, uh, also consistent with city council's direction from January. Uh, you requested that we provide a draft of the annual plan much, much earlier in the year. Um, and so we are targeting to work, uh, to do, have an annual plan draft for you in working with the land preserve on programming, et cetera, for a review in August 2025. That should give enough time to help inform whatever budget impacts there might be. Um, the third and fourth, um, I suppose are, could be done in either order, but I, I, I'm presenting it here in the order I would recommend to you. Um, and, and it's been brought up multiple times tonight, the funding or operating models that we use. Um, I do think the MOU will, especially given the direction that the land preserve has provided to us about their desire approach, um, will come out of that, but I do think that there is a conversation that we should have about funding and, and how we're going to pay for things and looking at the parks fund and what available resources we have available within our budget. Um, we could do that after we get done with goals and objectives, right, to finalize the plan? Or we could do that, you know, later, uh, you know, it's beginning in the fourth quarter of 2025. My recommendation though is in the order that you see here. And then we would put the goals and objectives into the 2026 annual work plan for the Quincy Farm.
Thoughts? Yes? Okay. Looks like you have agreement.
So just to clarify, we still, the liaison assignment by council would still remain active throughout step four, right? I mean, sorry, Earl, but.
I would be supportive of that.
You're, you're, you're burdened throughout.
Let me just say too, for, for councils, so they understand, I'm sure they do, but, um, staff and the land preserve in these meetings, and there were a bunch of these meetings and a bunch of hours. And then I can't imagine how many more countless hours out and around from the team meetings that I was honored to participate in. And it was, it was great conversations and oftentimes no holds barred. Sometimes it almost appeared to be a WWE type of an event. But I really do believe that it just, I mean, there's no question that, that, uh, everything was kind of exposed and discussed and came out, and it ended up in being the result that, that, uh, that council had the ability to look at tonight. So it was, uh, it was an honor to be able to participate in that and look forward to continuing to do more of it.
Well, and I think my concluding remarks are basically, you know, I do appreciate everything the land preserve has done. Volunteer organization, it really steps up to the plate. Um, and then the, you know, the last comment I have is recognizing Emily for everything that she has done. This is, this is, uh, this project is not just from when you gave us this direction in January until today for Emily. Um, this has been a part of her life. There's really no other way to put it. Good and for bad.
She was, she was the one that would start every meeting with, let's get ready to rumble.
But no, honestly, um, the, I can't overstate, uh, Emily's contributions, uh, on so many levels. Her institutional knowledge, her work rate, her work ethic, um, the quality of work that she brings to the product. Uh, it just really doesn't, it can't be understated how valuable it is. So thank you, Emily.
We know it has not been easy. All right. Um, well, thank you again to everyone for that great discussion and to staff for the excellent preparation and to the land preserves for all of your efforts as well. Moving on to, um, our discussion of hybrid meetings, I believe City Manager Kramer is going to take that for us.
Yes, and I wasn't totally prepared to do this presentation tonight, but we're going to, we're going to give it a good go. So, um, as council may remember, the last time we had this conversation, you gave direction to staff to do some homework, um, and specifically as related to looking at other municipalities, their technology and their setups, um, and then also discussing the Greenwood Village and how they operate, because there was some discussion about that. Um, I'm going to summarize here. I'll, there's more detail in the staff memo, but I'll just say, let's go back one slide real quick. So looking at the other cities, there were multiple statements made by multiple council members that a lot of other boards and commissions allow remote participation, and that it was pretty darn widespread. After our research, we would agree. That was definitely the conclusion. There is hardly any other municipality that does not allow remote participation. There's a, I think there was a couple, if I'm not mistaken, from Laura, but, um, the, 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 the interesting flip side of that conversation is, um, you know, we had also mentioned to you that we may need to make some investments to allow us to have effective, productive meetings in the event that we have those kinds of remote meetings. Um, and Laura, in her research, looked at a lot of other municipalities, watched their YouTube videos. Um, you know, I'm, again, I'm thankful for Laura for being there to be able to do that because that means I didn't do it. Um, what was interesting is there's really not a lot of investments that we would likely come back to you with to improve those meetings because nobody else had some silver bullet. They all were slightly more clumsy and awkward than a normal meeting might, you, one might expect. It, it, it almost kind of came with the territory. So, uh, you know, I, from a practical level, I guess there's some good news for staff. Uh, because, you know, it just, um, there, as long as everybody knows that going in, there, there's going to be those moments. Uh, you know, we had the owl for when we had our consultant. Uh, the owl is the device that we use to have the remote participation. The volume kind of went down a little bit at one point or whatever. We, that just may be a part of what these are if we have remote participation. Um, the Greenwood Village situation, um, they did have, uh, for the most part, one meeting a month for a regular meeting, and then another meeting for study sessions. However, I believe Laura did some research. I believe it's in the staff memo. They did have to then have scheduled special meetings because they had contracts or land use cases or whatever it may be, that necessitated that they couldn't wait a whole month to have a regular council meeting again. I, I, I will just speak for myself, not even for Laura at this point. I don't know if, I, I, I don't know if that would really help move the, the ball down the field on either participation or the remote, uh, participation, uh, aspect of this. Um, it was interesting though. It's certainly a unique way of doing it. Um, so with that said, um, in the staff memo, we outlined on, as we see on the next slide, we did outline, um, there were a couple of stronger recommendations that we had for council. Uh, the first related to who could participate virtually, council or the public or both. Um, staff is recommending that if we do have any kind of remote participation, that we limit that to city council and or, you know, a related, a presenter, like for example, we had with the consultant. Um, it would not be for staff members. Um, it would really just be for that limited, um, uh, option. We also are recommending that this not apply to boards and commissions, uh, just as an example, obviously with P&amp;Z. If there's concern about having public hearings and with remote participation, P&amp;Z doesn't have any other kind. Um, so that would render those, they really wouldn't be able to meet any other way. Um, we, we often staff those with just a single staff person. We just don't have a lot of available staff to man all of our boards and commissions with two people. Um, so we're requesting that, that we only allow this policy apply, uh, to, uh, city council. Within that, the remaining, uh, options that we talked about, staff is able to provide support with any of those remaining options. So if there is concern about allowing public hearings, uh, with remote participation, one option would be to not allow that. Um, and we, staffs have the opinion that if you didn't allow public hearings to be with remote participation, it would be too much of a disruption to our applicant schedules. It would be so hard to plan. We would require so much notice from you ahead of time that it would really be impracticable. It really would be impracticable. So the alternative, um, would be, in essence, reduce the number of regular meetings. And we talked about this last time, I believe, reduce the number of regular meetings. Reduce the number of regular meetings, but then not allow remote participation. The discussion that we had last time was that, you know, we already have two meetings or two, two months a year where we only have one meeting and maybe there's an option to do that for another month or two, right? Maybe it's quarterly or something instead of biannually. It would be predictable and planable. We talked about it as staff. We do think that there are, we think we could absolutely accommodate any kind of schedule challenges that might arise from that. So that's how we would be able to provide support for that alternative. Option B is that we just allow virtual participation. I believe there was some discussion last time from council members that they would attempt to provide as much notice as possible. And, you know, in essence, when there's maybe, we knew ahead of time if there was some critical meeting or you just limited, just as a general practice, you tried to limit it so that you weren't remote, you know, every other meeting or whatever it might be. But in that case, we, as a staff, we absolutely could provide support for that option as well. And obviously, option C, as you can see, would be both, if you, if that's what council wanted to do. So from a staff perspective, I think we're looking for feedback on all three of these questions, but especially the, the question three, that really does come down to a council preference at this point. So I'm going to pause right there and let- We'll circle back to that one. That's more practical.
In, in the memo, it says, "Well, staff has strong concerns with one and two," which was, wait.
That's the strong recommendation. That's, yeah. That's where we don't allow boards, our boards and commissions to do it and where we also then, yeah, this would only apply to council is our recommendation.
I misread that. I thought they were talking about option A, B, and C.
We should probably talk about that first, right? Just to get agreement on one and two.
Sure, yeah. I, I think, I mean, I, is there any disagreement on one and two? No? Okay.
We're just talking about us.
I, I agree. I mean, in other words, the question is, is to the extent we make the decision, we're willing to do hybrid meetings, then-
Correct. Yes. If, if, yes. Correct. Yeah.
Right. I, I agree with that 100%.
I have one question about, did any of the examples, as I've been thinking through this more just myself, did any, does the mayor ever participate remotely? That seems really hard. I don't, I'm wondering if you-
I, I would love to have that answer. I, I really don't.
So I watched most of the council meetings with Laura and from my memory, I don't ever remember the person running the meeting being virtual.
I'm just-
It seems like it would be really-
Yeah, practically speaking-
We didn't specifically check that though.
But I mean, but, but more than a council, a sitting council person, the person running the meeting, whether it's the mayor, mayor pro tem or anybody else, you're also engaging with members of the audience. That would be really difficult.
Right. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, but I don't think I can participate in the meeting since I'm not a voting member. All I do is lead the meeting. So if I'm not leading the meeting, then-
But you still provide-
Well, no.
Not you.
I think historically, the mayor has always provided-
Interesting observation that everybody else could do it except for me. Yeah.
It's one of the privileges of the title.
You could do it. I mean, the point is you just don't fulfill your normal role. Because it'd be very difficult to do.
Yes, no, I, I know. It would be-
Virtually impossible. I mean, you've got some council members whose names interrupt all the time and-
No, and you wouldn't be able to see, no, and-
You wouldn't be able to deal with them.
You wouldn't be able to see who's, you know, trying to speak.
Thank you, Earl.
You wouldn't be able to see that audience. You wouldn't be able to see, so, no, it would be very difficult.
Okay. Can I ask a question? On option B, ideally, how much notice, how much notice do you have when something is coming up as a quasi judicial public hearing? Like, how far in advance do you know, okay, this is going to be at the June 24th meeting?
So- Correct. And with land use cases, it will often go to the P and Z the month before.
Right.
So we will sometimes have up to two months' notice. Unfortunately, that is not locked tight at all. And I will use Brave as an example. I believe that one went to P and Z and then got continued from the next available council meeting to the December one. And remember, we had concerns because they had previously stated they were trying to meet an advertisement goal to get an enrollment above a certain number. And so they had hoped to go in December, I think, or maybe it's November. Yes, and we, we, there was also concern about a new council. And yet we had, I forget why we had to do it. Do you remember? There was some reason we had to get, end up continuing it.
So then you had more notice.
You did have more notice, but if-
Changed. Yeah, but it changed.
It's still changed. And so from a predictability perspective, it would have been impossible to predict.
What, and just, and again, I apologize for being slow. Option B is we allow those meetings. Who's, what, what, what's the more notice of?
We're just hoping, we're just hoping that-
As much notice as we-
Yes. Correct. That's it.
So at a minute, so we're required, so ideally you would like six weeks' notice or, I mean-
We would take whatever we could get, but yeah, six weeks would be great because that would theoretically be before most P and Z, most public hearings.
We're required to notice public hearings, how far in advance?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days. So at an absolute minimum, it would be 15 days.
But we would love more.
Would we actually publish 15 days?
Right. Like a week, yeah. So it's more like three, a minimum of three weeks, when we would know that it's being scheduled for that time.
So do we know, Emily, as you watch the other meetings and so on, how did they do, was there a monitor setup where you could actually see the remote person and they could see us? Or how does it actually work?
It varied every scenario you can think of. Some folks had, yeah, some folks had someone displayed on the screen, you know, small on, showing on a large screen. Some people, you couldn't see them at all. Some people, you would have another large screen with everybody's little video showing in it. It really, it, every combination you can think of.
But I think-
There's not really a consistent.
With our setup, I think we're going to have an opportunity to provide the picture, the video of the person participating remotely.
Is that going to be on the screen here?
Yeah. Possibly.
See what the guy was last week.
Like a zoom?
Yeah. Andrew was on the-
Oh, yeah. Andrew, yeah.
If you're using the owl, it's a different thing. So this, every staff person who is presenting, so my laptop, Chris's laptop, Jay's laptop, we would all each then have to join the Zoom in order to keep that, or whatever, the hybrid meeting, in order to keep that view for you all.
If you're, if you're participating remotely.
If there's, if there's anyone participating remotely.
And can the remote, yeah, because if you're sharing your screen, you have to share it with the remote person. How does the remote person-
Have to be joined to the Zoom.
Because you're sharing your screen. So you have to have that, yeah.
Yes.
And how is that person, how is Andrew seeing the slides just from the screen behind me?
No, he's logged in to the Zoom.
Okay.
To show the slides. So he'd be seeing what you see.
Yeah, okay.
Well, except does he then see each of our pictures on his screen?
No, because we're not zoomed in.
No. So that's-
But it did have the owl camera.
Okay. Hold on. So as far as I know, we're not anticipating using the owl all the time as the setup. We are trying to fix the AV system so that we can call in using this system to the meeting directly, which is a different setup than the owl setup than, that you've seen. So it's not quite, it's not quite the same.
And what if there was two or three remote in the same meeting? How would that work?
The same way.
Same way.
You, you would just see more people in little boxes. Yeah. But that's something, that reference and setting is something that we could discuss with council, whether, I mean, that is helpful information for us to know. Do you want to be able to see that person at all times? Because that will determine how we set up the meeting.
Yeah, I, I think a setup the way, I mean, I'm, I just had my rappaho transportation group meeting and you can see everybody who's in the meeting on your screen. And I think that's being able to see them when they talk for what we're doing, I think, is a, is a valuable tool.
Were they all zoomed in? Were they all remote?
Well, I would guess.
Probably all remote.
They, I think you'd have to be.
No, they weren't all remote.
Is that what would show up on our screen here?
It can.
You almost need this camera on each screen, right?
It can. You can set it that way. It just becomes complicated when you're switching between different people's computers. They have to set everything up at a time. The alternative is for one person, probably Laura, to have joined the virtual meeting and have everybody's PowerPoints, which is-
That's probably how we would have to do it.
Which is-
cumbersome.
Tough. Yeah.
But we could probably do that.
But we would not be individuals because we're not, people, council members who are physically here are one Zoom, or one participant, right? So the whole dais is one.
Correct.
Yeah, they would see the whole dais.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the person that's participating virtually isn't going to see all of you unless they also were to open YouTube and watch the live stream, which then it would be a couple seconds delay.
Oh, my gosh. Couple second delay.
So, yeah, really, they, they wouldn't see your individual faces. They would just hear your audio.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a camera that's hooked to the Zoom. Our cameras are only hooked to YouTube.
Right.
So they wouldn't see what the, they wouldn't be logging in. I guess they could separately on a-
Yeah. Again, they, they would want to turn the audio off.
If you have your iPad.
Yeah, or else you'd have an echo too.
Yeah.
Emily, how many times, when you, when you were monitoring that, the people that were coming in hybrid, how many times, if at all, did they ever sit back and go, "I, I can't hear or I can't see what's going on?" Because, you know, the point is, is this is something that I've noticed all my life. And when I'm on conference calls, you know, in a group thing, people will sit back and go, "Earl, why are you yelling?" And I'm, you know, because I'm talking to you, going, "Because they can't hear on the other end of the line." Almost no one does that. You start talking like the line. And the person goes, "I can't hear you."
Earl, you're always yelling now.
Because that's just the way I talk.
The way I am, like from Pittsburgh. But I mean, I'm just curious, do they-
Yeah, and I, well, Emily's looking, I just did the Centennial Noise Committee and it was a hybrid call. There you could see the whole committee, at least those who were present. And they also took public comment. They were not using Zoom or Teams, so I don't know quite what the technology was and it took me a little bit to figure it out. But only one, and this was a public speaker out of maybe a handful or two, had that, had that kind of issue. They corrected it quickly and went on with it. It actually worked pretty well. I don't think they could see me though. They had my camera disabled.
When you say that they could see the committee, they could see the committee in one-
I could see the committee in one-
In one screen. Yeah, not individuals.
Correct. That's right. But it, it worked pretty well.
Laura had a, a great line in the memo that the friction and the occasional awkwardness seemed to be inherent in hybrid meetings. And that's really what we were finding. Our sort of laughing conclusion at the end of watching a bunch of these was, oh, we're not that terrible because every meeting we watched, there was something, right? Somebody was too loud. Somebody's video wasn't working. There was one where they, they did have overhead cameras, but every time it switched, it would flip around. So you got to see this awful roller coaster, nauseating view of the room. So there's just, there's always some level of awkwardness amongst other municipalities, we found. So it's just, it's really hard to run a seamless hybrid meeting without any of those hiccups.
With that said, we, we still think we could support it.
Without spending all our money, she said.
Correct.
That, that was the takeaway was, oh, like, it's, it's not just us. We're not special. It's just a little bit strange.
It just comes with the territory more than we were deficient.
And what she told me today was she thought our setup was actually better than most of the ones.
I would agree.
And the audio definitely comes across better than most.
And with YouTube and turn that audio off, the combination works pretty well, I think. You know, I was wondering, because it is new and the like, if maybe a modification to one of your options, which would be to trial it, if there's no investment, software or hardware, other than staff time and investment in learning it, maybe trial it between now and the end of the year and see how it goes, get feedback, and then council decides whether it's something you want to continue with or not, as opposed to making a permanent decision? Because there are some dynamics to figure out and see how it works and so forth.
Well, I think the, the work involved in a trial is the same. I mean, we'd have to change our policy because right now our policy doesn't allow it at all. And we can always change our policy whenever we want. So if we changed our policy to allow it and found that it didn't work or whatever, we could always change it back. So it's, I think those things are relatively minor. They're kind of the same thing, as it turns out.
I just raised the question, what about the idea of maybe going from 22 to 20 meetings a year? Would that accomplish the desire for travel or for other stuff that if those who are in it notified, we decided now what, when those were? Or not now, but in the, in the near future?
No, that would be, speaking of, that would be my preference as opposed to go to hybrid. I'd be more in favor of dropping two meetings, two more meetings and going that way. But that's, that's just me.
But I guess what concerns me about that is, I mean, it sounds like that's what Greenwood Village tried to do and what they found out was they ended up needing to have the meetings anyway. And so then you're going to end up with people who relied on that who are then out of town.
Yeah, for me, it's not travel. It's not to accommodate travel as much as it is to, because I value all of your input. And if somebody has an emergency trip, a family emergency or some, but they can still log on. You know, if you're really on vacation, maybe you don't have to attend council that one time. But if it's, my example is if I'm, you know, out of town helping my mother, I could, you know, I could easily join the meeting. But before, while I have the mic, I did have, and I appreciate the proposed policy, I had a suggest, also a suggested addition that I also spoke to Laura about. I think where it says number five on page 98 of our packet, the city council members who are attending by electronic participation shall have their cameras on at all times. I would maybe add a new number five about the city council's members who are attending by electronic participation shall log on early, right? To, to figure out any of those potential audio and visual issues. I mean, you might be in a different time zone. You might even be in a different country. You might be, you know, at somebody's retirement home, whatever. And so to give the clerk an opportunity to make sure that there are no bugs in that it works. So I would just add that to that proposed policy.
And I think if, if we do this, you'd have to have some protocols where, I've been on calls where people are taking it from the cab, you know what I mean? Or they're in a restaurant or something like that. You'd have to, we'd have to have the commitment that you're in a private space on a computer focused on the meeting and not, you know, some other-
And if there's a poor internet connection, maybe it, you cut it off.
Right. Yeah. It's too disruptive.
So I have to say that my preference, if, if the commitment for meetings is burdensome, my preference would be to reduce the number of meetings for a variety of reasons. Number one is that I worry about the ill will strain on the, the council, sort of, I can't even think of the word, but the, it's those types of things, right? That somebody's doing it from their car and that's annoying. Somebody's, you know, doing it because they have to pick their kid up from swim practice and you don't feel like that's appropriate. And so I just think that it kind of has the potential to breed discontent amongst each other for things, for choices and decisions. for choices and decisions that people are making that you maybe don't feel are appropriate or would have done differently. I also, I'll just, when it occurred to me that really the only person who couldn't take advantage of this was me, that, I love that.
The good news is you don't get a vote, so.
Oh, exactly. So, you know, but, so, you know, my, I think that being here with all of you and, I don't think we could have had the discussion we had tonight if one of you were not in the room. And I honestly, sincerely believe that. I think that's why we're here. I think that's the job we signed up to do and that's my personal opinion. But it is the preference of the council. They are council meetings and it is up to you guys to decide.
One other thing I was going to just mention, when you're, the other thing, though, is that if we were to do hybrid, again, I tend to feel like Katie does, I already said what it is, but if we did it, I don't think it could include executive sessions. And the reason is, let's just assume we're all John Does here, because I'm not pointing about anybody at the end of the day. You don't know if anybody's recording something or not. It's a private, it's a private executive session. It's not supposed to be. I mean, I can't imagine, I can't even imagine that it's allowed, but I gather it is. But, I mean, I would say we don't do it. You couldn't do it for executive sessions.
I'm not as familiar with the technicalities. I think there are communities that do it. I would, I...
I wouldn't do it.
Policy preferences and personal opinions aside, I have to point out that you rely on your fellow council members to keep their conversations private anyway and that no one's got a phone in their pocket rolling, even when you're all in the same room. Just being completely objective on that.
Or discusses it outside of the room.
That's what I started with, right. But, but just playing, just being completely objective. I mean, I do have my own thoughts on this, but that's not really...
You don't dial in any extra journalists or something like that by mistake?
I try not to use, you know, different platforms, yeah.
John Does here, no pointing out, but, I mean, I went to a number of Douglas County School Board meetings. And I can just tell you right now, I know what everybody counts on. You don't operate that way. You operate from an objective standard and you just say, "Does this make sense or not?" That's what I would do. I mean...
Well, and I think we are very fortunate and frankly, always have been in the 14 years that I've been on council, that even when times were difficult, they've never been, we've never had the kind of disagreement, sometimes animosity, sometimes, you know, that has discord that takes place in other cities. And so I'm so grateful for that. And, you know, like I said, I mean, this is just a policy. Nothing is actually written in stone. And whatever works for this council may or may not work for future councils. That's all.
If we were to consider it, would council want to limit the number, you know, so that it is for exceptional circumstances? Or are you thinking more open-ended?
Yeah, I mean, when I was anticipating this, it certainly wasn't for, oh, you know, I've got a cocktail party this evening. I'll just go take it in my car so I can go to my cocktail party. I think people are intending it for situations where you're, you've had a long planned trip and it conflicts with council, or you've got a business meeting, or you've got family obligations that you need to take care of. I don't think it's, and I would be very comfortable saying we limit how often people can utilize it or that, you know, I don't know. I think we're, I think that we're the only, one of the few cities, I guess not the only, but one of the few cities that doesn't allow it is, surprise me. But I think it can be functional, it can be functional if that many municipalities are using it. And the benefit it gives is that you do get the input from the people who aren't there. You do get the input from the people who, for some reason, can't be there.
I guess the other concern that I forgot to mention that I would have is that when there is, when the cell phone is on the agenda, my expectation is that every single one of you is sitting here in this seat just like everybody else. Because facing a mob of 50 angry people, like, that's the job. Looking them in the eye and being honest with them, I think that's the job and not, you know, leaving it to a few people in the room. These are the things, and, you know, to your point of, it is supposed to be intended as an emergency and it's not if you have a cocktail party. These are the types of judgment calls that people may not always share that same, right? And that's where I think it has the potential to just kind of create discord, is the right word, amongst council members, that, you know, somebody wasn't there when you think they should have been, or they, you know, I don't know.
Interesting is, just along those lines, is that, again, we don't have a lot of the same big issues that other councils do and we're nonpartisan, et cetera. But the fact that we're one of the few that doesn't do it, is that one of the reasons that there is so little discord around here and we get along? Because we spend so much time together versus the others don't? I don't know, but it's...
Well, maybe we could agree to norms, like what you, you know, starting with maybe your suggestions. And you do notice that the first, number one is, says in the proposed policy is, "City council members affirm their intent to attend as many meetings in person as possible." But, you know, maybe we could agree to, like you said, Councilor Heller, maybe it's one a year, or maybe it's two a year, you know, whatever it is. And maybe, and we wouldn't have to do that before we adopted the policy, but, you know, that could be something that we thought about together.
So if we're doing that, does it make more sense to cut back a meeting or two in our schedule? I just wonder if that...
Because the problem with that, Doug, is that it doesn't, it doesn't match with the emergency that comes up for Karen or my board meeting in December. It doesn't help with that. And that's what we're trying to get at.
Yeah. I mean, we just had, Rob missed a meeting for an emergency. And we survived.
Well, and to that point, you guys can always survive without me, probably better than when I'm here. But that said, I mean, I think the idea is that if, I mean, I made the calculation, I mean, emergency aside, I make calculations about whether it's more important for me to be here than not. Today was a great example. I could have stayed in DC another day and helped my daughter pack. But I thought we had an important agenda tonight and it was important for me to, could I have packed all day and participated remotely? Yeah. I'm waiting for a phone call that says you need to be on the midnight call because we didn't get done and we need you to get back on the red-eye plane. But the idea was, I was willing to do that. I was willing to come home for the meeting tonight and go back tomorrow morning because this was important to me. Now, you know, my standards may not be wherever this policy applies to in the future or something like that. But the idea is that true emerg, I made a calculation that I'm probably not going to have 100% attendance. And if I really value that much, if it's an emergency, it's hands down, I go to the emergency. If it's not an emergency, but it's pretty important for me to be there, then I will be here. And if not, I mean, we don't require 100% attendance. We just say, you know, at some point, you're not fulfilling your duties as a council member and you probably ought to think about whether you ought to be doing it. But sometimes it's okay just not to be at a meeting and that's the call you make.
We have had to cancel meetings for not having quorum where we would not have had to do that necessarily, if we had allowed participation.
Those are based on emergencies. I mean, far enough out, if it means the difference between having a quorum and canceling a meeting, I would hope that I would turn around and say it's important to have a meeting and I would juggle schedule or make that call. But, you know, is that the same standard that everybody would make or anybody in the future would make? I don't know. Those are, I'm just telling you that my reason is it's not 100% required that I'm here. And if I really want to be heard that night, I'll find a way to be here.
So I think that we have had to cancel meetings for lack of a quorum. That is extremely rare. And it will be, I believe, a lot more rare now that there's, we have fewer people that are on the same schedule. You know, most of that that occurred was because Dan Sheldon and I both had kids in school with the same break time. And when, if the two of us were gone, right, and anybody else was, so, yeah, so, I'm just saying that people don't have the same schedule. You know, everybody, our kids don't go to the same schools, is what I'm saying. What is more common is that we cancel meetings because we don't have enough agenda items. Unfortunately, we just never exactly know too far in advance when those things will be. But, you know, there, I would say we know with some 70% accuracy. Most things aren't, you know, can be scheduled around. They can be moved up or they can be pushed back based on our schedule if we know, you know, what those things are and when those meetings are.
Well, what are people's thoughts about, about the idea of giving it a trial run for some period of time and seeing, seeing how it goes? I mean, is, it is possible that we could try it and people would say, "Oh, you know what? That works out pretty well. It's not what I thought it was going to be." And is it worth giving it a shot just to see that and see how often, in fact, we actually even have to use it? It may be that it's a once or twice a year situation.
I would be in favor of trying it because I agree with Councilor Eber. I just don't think many of us are going to do it very much. I just, I trust that people aren't going to miss meetings. Yeah, so.
I mean, when we started this, I wasn't sure if we were talking about to accommodate people who wanted to spend a winter somewhere else. But it sounds like what we're trying to do is really accommodate the people who are called away for some reason and have a conflict with any individual meeting, not a series of meetings that would be participated at remotely.
There's really no distinction, though. I mean, I mean, that's really the thing.
And when I brought it up, I brought it up because I said there were times when, with my husband retiring, that we may want to take a three-week trip. And, you know, and so far, we've been able to schedule that so that, you know, I left on a Wednesday and I returned on a Monday, you know, and, you know, it was a long month, so there was an extra week in there. So to be fair, that's what first brought it up. And I really hadn't thought about, I mean, I had thought about people who were out of town for business. I hadn't really thought about family emergencies, that kind of thing.
Yeah, but I also agree with you, Rob. I mean, I'll just tell you, I have, I have to be in San Antonio for, I don't know what meeting it is, but I'm taking a couple-hour early flight, just like you, so I'll get here for the council meeting. And I have that flexibility. But sometimes you don't.
All right, well, it is...
Or sometimes you plan to be back and your flight gets canceled and you're stuck in a hotel in Houston. Now, that never happens.
It is 10:20. I have to be at Stuttler Bowl at 6:30 in the morning tomorrow. So if there is, what is the pleasure of the council?
Well, I guess, I guess if we're saying, "Let's give it a try," what does that mean then? I mean, and I'll just throw this out as an example. So we wait until it happens one time and then we assess then. We come back. Because like, for instance, the next meeting, maybe, I mean, and it's like Karen said, we're all going to do our best. I mean, the next meeting, we all may be here. So that's not it. So it's like, whenever it happens, then we agree that we're going to assess then.
Maybe we talk about it at the retreat.
I think we'd need to...
Because we need a couple times.
Yeah, we'd need, we'd need to pass the policy, right?
You need to revise your policy, even to give it a try, to the mayor's point earlier.
And then we can agree to it.
The work is to be done now as a trial or now as a policy revision is one and the same.
Yeah, we adopt it as a policy and we agree to revisit at the beginning of the year.
Whatever the pleasure of council is.
I mean, that's a feasible way of managing it.
Susan, that's what I was thinking when I said a trial run, policy change notwithstanding. Give it, you know, the remainder of the year. And then if it works, stick with it. If not, go back to the...
And assumably, we will have one virtual meeting because you have a board meeting and our December meeting, right?
Yep. Which I would gladly get back for, but I...
But now, that is a public hearing because it's the budget. So...
I think we do need direction from council on which of these options we're going with in order to change the policy to what council is thinking.
Do we actually need to change the policy or do, can we just hold it in abeyance for a period of time?
No, you need to change the policy.
Well, I change the policy by saying it's no longer in force until further notice. And then it doesn't say that...
I mean, that wouldn't, I still think there's some parameters that need to be established. So you might as well go through the exercise and be my thought.
Okay, that's fine.
It's also council's entire rules of procedure that it references, so I don't think you want to...
Suspend rules, yeah.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we go with option B, which would be allow it and try to give as much notice of virtual participation as possible.
Are we voting? Is that what we're doing?
There would have to be a motion of some sort. And, I mean, as much as possible, what does as much as possible mean?
I think you make a good faith effort to provide that as much as possible.
Okay, so then, if we're doing it, then, and it's been discussed, but, I mean, is it, are the parameters laid out? I mean, in other words, there won't be any in the cars. There won't be any on the phones. You've got to be in a secure location. We're agreeing that that's the deal. I mean, again, because there's been a lot of stuff talked about, but there's been nothing where people have said, "This is what I'm agreeing to." So I don't exactly know where we are.
Yeah, and I think we need to set parameters.
I agree.
I was coming in here thinking I was not for this at all, but I guess I'm open to give it a try. But I want to have parameters around that it's really for, you know, emergency or for, it's, I guess we can't define that. It's going to be difficult. But it's not frequent. It's infrequent.
Right.
And that you have to have set up in a good location.
Okay, so I don't think we're, I think staff is seeking direction from city council in this matter. And so are we saying we're willing to direct staff to provide some parameters about being in a secure location and...
Logging on a little bit early.
Logging on early.
Is our staff available early like that? Or are they, okay.
Yes.
We can support that.
And we sort of briefly talked about executive sessions, but I don't know if there's, and I actually don't, I'm assuming there's a way to break that out, to make it happen technically but, or technologically, but I don't know the answer to that. Could there be a statement at the beginning that says, you know, you know, when you turn off the recording or whatever that you could say? The problem with executive session is that it's not held in this room. We don't have any of this right equipment.
So in the, in the attached draft electronic policies, if you look at page four of five, number 13 under C, "City council may convene executive sessions and meetings conducted by electronic participation if sessions otherwise conform to the requirements of Colorado law. No individual council member using electronic participation for an executive session may permit any other person to hear, see, blah, blah, except as required." So, yes, so, but, I mean, I think there's, that stuff is already in there. It's really just, do you want to...
Then you'll just be on by phone.
But, yeah, because that was developed when we were doing it, only when everyone was all virtual or all present.
Right.
So we didn't have the issue that the mayor just raised about how you're going to make it work. So I don't, I mean, yeah, we can draft all that stuff, but the question is, how does it happen mechanically? Because, well, yes, because we go to executive session, the city attorney hands out confidential handouts. You can't see them because you're on, I guess you could be emailed in advance. If you're on the phone, you could be emailed in advance. Yeah, yeah.
Um...
We can, we can draft it.
When we have executive sessions, we do have the ability to Zoom in that room.
We do.
Yeah.
So we could still...
That is true.
Do the...
Okay. And is Zoom considered secure enough? I thought there were issues with Zoom.
Well...
Well.
The app is not, the, the web browser is, where DOE still tells us, critical infrastructure not to use the app.
Okay. So Chris, you all are.
At what point, what do we do, um, so Doug, you mentioned that it needs to be infrequent. What does that mean? And what do we do when someone has exceeded those bounds or has not met whatever other norms we might establish?
What do you do when someone doesn't show up to city council meetings or whatever?
Nothing. I mean, that.
Well, I mean, that was an issue with the last council.
Yes, well, that, I mean, we could have, we could have tried to remove that person from office.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think it's any different, I guess is my point. It's their failure to attend. Well, they're attending, I guess, but.
But that's an example of what Katie's talking about, which is that.
We couldn't remove you if you're attending.
You tend not to do that and it generates an undercurrent of discord, which it certainly did in the case of the individual that you're talking about amongst the rest of council.
And we would not have had grounds to remove that person if that person had been attending the meetings.
Okay, so.
Can you take the virtual participation privilege away from that individual?
I don't know. I, I would, it was a question.
Can you, can you remove them? You can just censure them. You can't remove them, can you? You have to wait till.
We can start proceedings to remove someone from office, yes.
Huh, interesting. Well, let me ask you this. That's, that's interesting because, so what if you have someone who comes to meeting but who's doesn't abide by whatever the norms and parameters are in the meeting?
That's, a lot of cities do have that. I mean, and it's.
It's basically, you've got a person who's kind of a jerk on your city council, right? Who's not abiding by the norms.
A lot of cities.
So I can be a jerk as long as I come to the meetings and you can't do anything to me?
Well, we could censure you. Yeah, we could censure you. I mean, censure you, but it, I mean, I think we should, yes.
I think we should put language in that says it's, it is something that is to be used in, you know, that is, what's the phrase I'm thinking of? That not in the ordinary course of business and in the unusual circumstance that someone needs to use it. And, um, can you phrase some language that would allow Katie to censure me when I'm using it too often? From.
Yeah, I don't really, I mean, you know, I don't want to do that.
Give her a shot and then Katie would be immune from censure because she'd have to be here all the time.
Yeah, there you go.
But I, I, I think we have to rely on each other to.
No, I agree. I'm just wondering what that, because like I said, I mean, it's a judgment call. And I absolutely hope that because of the relationship that we all have, that there never comes a time where I have to say, you know what, Susan? It's, it's really disruptive and I appreciate, you know, I, I mean, I just hope that I never have to do that, but, um.
Maybe change the policy back if there are abusers. It punishes everybody, but that may be the, the only recourse.
Well, I think the thrust is, is that, you know, and it's like, like, um, the city attorney said, you know, when I brought up the issue with the executive sessions and she said, hey, you know, everybody's kind of on their honor, you make pledges yourselves, blah, 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 blah. Well, that's what we're doing here. We're all looking at each other and saying, hey, we're putting this in for convenience purposes and that's what we expect it to be used for is emergency and the rare convenience purposes. And, you know, if it's good enough for executive sessions, then it must be good enough for this. Ain't any different. Your word's your word.
And, and I think, to be fair, I don't think anybody's worried about anybody at this, on this dais. It's the next council and who, who comes in, right?
And they can change it.
They, they can. Um, you'd need the vote of that person to change it potentially, right?
Well, you're right.
So, um, but yeah.
Other councils have a code of explanations and so on. I, I don't think we need that here. But I mean, that other cities.
But I guess the other thing too, which, you know, let's face it, at the end of the day, I mean, you know, we have important stuff. I wouldn't have wanted anybody hybrid for this meeting, which the mayor already said. I wouldn't want anybody hybrid when we take up cellphones again. I wouldn't want anybody hybrid if, and it's already, it's been withdrawn, but I mean, if it comes back up again in that particular meeting, if you know what I'm talking about. I wouldn't want that. We don't have a lot of those, but when they come up, you need to, you need to be here because we just don't have that much. I mean, not that other stuff isn't important. It's important, everything's important, but when those things come up.
And sometimes they're not on the agenda. You know, the cellphone meeting, it wasn't an agenda item. It was a large number of people who chose to come to public conference.
And in that case, if someone were absent, it might be better that they're hybrid than not at all.
Maybe, I, I don't.
At least we heard it. They may not be able to completely, fully participate.
Yeah.
So, okay. Oh, wait, sorry. Um, so I heard we're, we're good with one and two. We're going with option B. We did not talk about oaths of office for Laura. So she had offered, um, that we could, her recommendation was that council members be required to be here in person for oaths of office, but she can accommodate and do that at a separate time also, if that's a burden. So is council okay with that recommendation? Okay, thank you.
So, so in person at the organizational meeting.
Yes. You can't be here for that, don't worry. I mean, that's, that's simple.
Well, I, I mean, that's, it's interesting that you say that though, because it often falls very close to New Year's Day.
I know it does.
So, um, in fact, when I was installed as mayor, it was two weeks later. Because we canceled that first meeting because people didn't want to be here. Other, other people did not want to be here, um, for that time, so. Um, all right. That's that. Moving on to reports, um, it's late. There is a lot going on, but I think you guys have seen the lawsuit. Please read through that stuff, read the complaint. There, it's very interesting and I frankly think exciting. It's needed to be done and I'm grateful to those communities for stepping up and doing that. And I, I think we'll be watching very closely and considering, you know, what, if any, actions city might be interested in taking as it relates to that. And I'll just leave it at that. Counselor Fisher?
No report, thank you.
I did have something, but I'm going to wait, given the hour, till a later date. Thank you, no report.
Arapahoe County Transit Group that I sit on met and, um, just the only interesting thing was there was a stunning amount of multifamily development going on in Arapahoe County. They kind of walked through all of it. There's a lot going on.
We've been trying to tell the legislature that. Counselor Holland?
No report.
Dr. Cog meeting tomorrow night. I'll report next time. Also, there's an article in the paper today that the former hospital in Wheat Ridge is being proposed for thousands of units of redevelopment on 92 acres.
Two quick items. I want to just thank staff all around for Friday, for Saturday, the drop-off day. It was really well done. Had a chat with one of the officers and so that was good. I went to my first Centennial Noise Committee meeting, two things of interest. One, almost all of the complaints are, and I'm learning all the nomenclature, are from the training box out east. And a very interesting discussion because several homeowners got on virtually and were annoyed that they don't use the whole distance. So they do most of their training. I don't remember the exact, I think it was around 17 miles out. They have another eight miles that if they went farther east, there's nothing out there. So a lot of discussion, but the real interesting one, it was really Susan, along the lines of what you said, about multifamily being built at the south end of the runway, runways in areas that are not advised but not, can't be prohibited. And all it's going to end up is, you know, more noise complaints, more, you know, pollution complaints. And yet people are, other jurisdictions are not adhering to the airport guidelines. So super interesting, but nothing relative to Cherry Hills. I did notice lastly that the weather patterns this week, a lot more flights over the village.
And they're all, they're from DIA. That our issues now are not with Arapahoe, they're with DIA. And I personally filed, I think, a dozen noise complaints.
None from Centennial, from the village, yeah.
Because if you watch on the tracker, they're all from DIA and it's their specific east-west runway whenever they, when they're headed to destination south. City manager?
The only thing I guess I would just offer is that we have the scheduled June 17th city council meeting to discuss our third phase, our last phase of our housing legislation activity. So as the mayor gave everyone homework, I'm giving you a deadline. So study away.
I have no report.
What's going on at Quincy Farm?
Well, let me tell you.
Spring cleanup went well. I think the numbers were down a little bit. But we'll see. We don't have the totals on weights and how much paint and electronics we got. But it, and maybe it was just my staff set it up, you know, so much better this year that it was more efficient. And I thought there was less people, so, but it was a great day.
I have no report.
Seeing none, we will stand adjourned at 10:37 PM. No.